Okay, thank you for your patience with that brief delay. I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, December 3rd, 2014. And Commissioner Smith, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
If you may say so, I would like to invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I congratulate you on the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and Mr. Petches, if you'd please call the roll.
Commissioner Eggleston?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Chair Gordon?
Here.
Commissioner Crandall?
Here.
Mr. Brulon?
Commissioner Smith?
Okay, we have two sets of minutes to review and approve tonight. The first set is from the study session of November 19th, 2014. Are there any changes or a motion to approve?
They will be approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes six-zero. And then the second set is for the regular Planning Commission meeting of November 19th.
Just before I do a change, I just wanted to give a nod to everybody's head. I had mentioned that both Jim and Sean should have been recognized for the effort on the Kmart project, and that was not mentioned in here because I think they deserve to be in the minutes for the effort they put out.
Absolutely.
Good call.
So, could you review the -- I guess we can just come up with something. If everybody agrees that the commissioners indicated that they wanted to recognize Sean Nichols and Jim Petches for the work that they did in expediting the project, and they showed their understanding of what was necessary for the project.
So that's the question. Do you want me to put it by your number?
Yeah. And you don't have to use my name if you don't want, just the commissioners indicated they wanted you to recognize them.
Great point.
Any other changes or motion?
I'll make a -- go ahead.
Go ahead, you're there.
I'll make a motion that will be approved in a minute.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that also passes six-zero. At this point, if -- this is oral and written communication, and at this point, if members of the audience wish to address the commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on the agenda, they may do so at this time. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and city of residence, and make your presentation. Please do limit your presentation to three minutes. Seeing no one step forward, we'll move on to the public hearing process. The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed 10 minutes in public testimony. To facilitate the meeting for all attendees, the public is asked to limit their individual presentation to three minutes. Following closure of the public hearing, the Planning Commission will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. The first item on our agenda this evening is item 8A, 1410 Caie Alcazar, variance 14-374, the Cochee Residence Retaining Walls. And Adam Atamian, you're pitching for Amber Gregg?
Yes, that is correct. Happy to do so. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Adam Atamian. Tonight, on behalf of the case planner Amber Gregg, I am presenting Cochee Retaining Wall Variance Request. This is variance 14-374. This is a request for a new retaining wall to exceed the eight-and-a-half-foot height requirement for inward-facing retaining walls. The project is located at 1410 Caie Alcazar. The project is -- the property, I should say, is a deep flag lot that is located on a site that has substantial terrain and topographical constraints. The project is a request to replace a failing retaining wall that is over eight-and-a-half feet tall with a new retaining wall that is also over eight-and-a-half feet tall. The site is a developed site. It was developed in 1956 with a single-family residence. Due to the topography of the lot, it was graded flat, and a retaining wall was required to provide that grade. That retaining wall was 10 feet tall. In 1956, retaining walls this high did not require a variance, and so that's why it exists today. Nearly 60 years later, this retaining wall is starting to fail, and it is -- the homeowners would like to replace it primarily for safety concerns at this point. Some of the site characteristics that this property has is that, as noted before, it is a flag lot. The retaining wall doesn't start until about 80 feet from the front property line. It is really generally located in the back portion of the property where it's mostly only visible from -- to the property owners. The property has a very steep topography. The great difference between this property and the neighboring properties is anywhere from 10 to 20 feet. The flat portion of the site, due to what could be graded, leaves just the driveway and the building pad area that are flat. And the surrounding residents also have retaining walls due to those steep topography issues. Here are some pictures of the existing retaining wall. The picture on the left is the retaining wall closest to the front property line, and that portion of it, like I said before, is 80 feet away from the street. The picture on the left, and I'm sorry, on the one on the left, you can see the damage that's already occurred to this wall, the tremendous amount of cracks that are already present. Picture on the right demonstrates both the proximity of the wall to the residence and the fact that the wall is leaning a good portion of the way down the property line. The existing retaining wall is shown in this picture. The wall is actually -- it generally follows the property line, but it's a couple feet away from the property line. The portions in yellow are the portions of the existing wall that are over eight-and-a-half feet tall. The proposed wall is shown here. The corner is also over eight-and-a-half feet tall, but the areas that are over eight-and-a-half feet tall are slightly different, and they're different for two reasons. One is that the new wall is proposed to be slightly behind the old wall, and it's -- so it's higher up the slope, and therefore needs to retain more grade, and so it necessarily needs to be higher. And also, in the corner, they've reduced the exposed height of the wall by providing some landscape planters to provide a little bit of landscaping relief and to mitigate any negative visual impacts. So the project consists of a shotcrete retaining wall. This is going to require 30 caissons, which are up to 21 feet deep. The new retaining wall is, like I said, proposed to be behind the other one, and this is partly due to the requirements to build it, and so they'll build it behind the existing wall and then demolish the existing wall after the new wall has been installed. And the tallest portion of the actual retaining wall is 14 feet tall, but its exposed face is only 10 feet tall when you factor in that landscaped planter, which will help mitigate visual impacts. So the purpose of the variance is to provide relief from development standards, which would constrain a property owner from enjoying a right to the use of their property in a similar fashion to surrounding properties due to physical hardships of the property. So when looking at this project to meet that -- those requirements, to meet -- for the required findings of a variance, staff has determined that the location of the parcel has tremendous topographic constraints, which require retaining walls to provide the continuation of this use as a single-family residential site. The application in this instance is to replace a failing retaining wall, which is with a much safer wall, and that speaks to that continuation of the safety of the site, but it also provides safety to the surrounding properties that rely on this retaining wall to keep their properties stabilized. Failure of the wall would result in property damage to this site, as well as the destabilization of the slope and potential property damage to exist -- to neighboring properties. The property, based on where the house is built now and how close it is to the property line, they cannot build stepped retaining walls that would meet the zoning ordinance requirements, so at some point, just to maintain what they have, they would have to have a wall that's over height. And finally, because of the extreme grade changes, there are other retaining walls in the area that are also over eight-and-a-half feet tall, similar to this one. For the other walls in the area that are over eight-and-a-half feet tall, we've got some pictures. Now, these are all pictures taken from the public right-of-way, so these are visible from the street, the difference being on this project, they're not -- it's not visible from the street. It's primarily only visible from the residents. And there are a number throughout the neighborhood that require over-height retaining walls to provide a developable pad. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the proposed project because without the relief from these development standards, the applicant would not be able to secure the house that they have had for, you know, that's been existing there for over 60 years. And the fact that there are other residences in the neighborhood that also rely on these types of structures speaks to the necessity of it. That concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available for any questions. The applicant is available and is also available for questions.
I think the only question for me is, is there any other viable option for it as far as construction? And I don't see one, but was one proposed?
Well, originally, the plans were a little bit different. It was a taller wall. I spoke to the engineers when they originally came in on this project. Based on what it requires to build it and the site constraints, the height of the retaining wall is just -- it is what it is. There was nothing else that could be done. But by putting in those landscaped planters, they really did a good job of mitigating that impact to the fullest extent possible.
Very good. That's the answer I was looking for.
Michael?
Yeah, I guess I'll play devil's advocate here for a minute. I had a neighbor who did a retaining wall below me, and it was fairly substantial like this. And at one point in time during the construction, there was a very steep bank of unreinforced dirt that just sat there, and that's probably going to happen here as well. If there was to be some type of mudslide seismic activity or what have you that would cause that, or just by pulling the retaining wall away, if it would result in a slide of that earth and impacting the house above, what provisions are there for that homeowner to be protected in a case like that?
Well, our engineering division reviewed this project, and they have placed conditions of approval attached to the resolution, requiring that they meet engineering standards, some of which speak to the need to properly shore and protect neighboring properties, to protect the work site in, you know, from storm issues, things that would come up dealing with water or destabilizing impacts to the property during construction. They will need an engineering permit for this, and a lot of those inspections are geared towards making sure that those types of impacts are mitigated and reduced to the fullest extent possible. But at the end of the day, this property owner is responsible during this project to protect neighboring properties. The owner is here. He's more than willing to come and speak on that, but this is -- yeah, but I do note that his approval of that will be recorded when he consents to the conditions of approval, stating that that's part of the project.
And there'll also be a geologist that does require as part of the building permit process to submit a report that'll have measures within that report suggested or recommended to be followed to prevent such occurrence from happening. So that's standard operating procedures for us in all cases, and in Sacramity, we run into it a lot. So, and if there were something that happened, then it would be a legal issue for the property owner to deal with.
You know, I understand all of those engineering measures, and I think that's fine, but I'm looking at a worst-case scenario here. If something did happen, do we have a promise by the owner of this project to repair his neighbor's damages?
No, we don't have that within our conditions of approval, and that's not something that we typically add to our conditions of approval. That's really just becomes a civil matter between the neighboring property owners. But, you know, because they are going through the process which involves the permits, which involves the studies, we as the city are doing the best job possible of assuring a level of safety that comes with these projects.
And I failed to mention during my report, I did speak to one of the neighboring property owners today. They came in and looked at the plans. They said they were very supportive of the project. Their concern was, you know, the, you know, potential impacts to their property, but, you know, when I went through what the city goes through in protecting, you know, making sure that these projects are, you know, comply with engineering requirements, he stated he is very, very happy with the fact that they're doing this because it inevitably will help protect his property.
Cliff?
And I -- correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought either in the body of the packet or I was anticipating, are they going to be able to dig the caissons installed there prior to taking down your existing wall?
Yeah, behind the wall.
And that's safety in itself, to protect it during construction, that the supporting caissons will be in prior to the existing wall being removed?
I believe it's -- at certain -- the wall is not parallel to the property line, but there's a good five feet or so.
I think the sequences to the back of the wall will be complete before they take the old wall off.
Oh, it's very, yeah.
There's going to be a crane with a chianog or --
Hey, Don, do you have a question?
No, I don't -- I'm going to be in support of the project. I think it's -- I looked at it, and it's very well engineered. The engineering company, Peter Company, I know them, they're highly reputable, both from the design standpoint, and I don't know if they'll choose them to do the work. And they're going to sequence the wall in before they remove the old wall, so that's mitigation in itself for the slope. And obviously, I would hope they would wait till after the rainy season to commence it, and so I think it's prudent by the owner to come forward to do this to protect his investment, and it's -- it has helped. Also provides safety for the neighbors up slopes, so I'm glad to see it here.
Let me clarify what you just said, and the new wall is going to be constructed before the old wall is removed?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so any other questions for Adam? If not, perhaps the applicant would like to step forward and make a statement, or...
He said he was happy to answer questions, but generally agrees with staff's report.
Are there questions for the applicant? Okay, all right, thank you. Then we'll open the public hearing and ask if anybody wishes to speak to this matter, that they step forward now. And seeing no one step forward, we'll close the public hearing and invite discussion or emotion.
If there's no further discussion, I'd like to approve Resolution Number PC 14-050, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California approving variance of 14-374, Cochee Residence Retaining Wall, request to replace a failing retaining wall in excess of eight-and-a-half feet in height, and replace it with a new retaining wall at 1410 Caie Alcazar.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, passes six-zero. Thank you very much. All right, the next item on our agenda will be item 8B, and that's 234 West Avenue de Palazada Cultural Heritage Permit 14-275, the Zulfakar Edition. And just a -- I noticed there are a number of people in the audience. If you haven't been to a Planning Commission meeting before, and you think you're going to wish to speak to this matter, you may wish to fill out a green card in the back and hand it to our recording secretary, because we ask that you submit those when you speak. So with that said, Mr. Jones, would you like to give us an overview of the project?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. This is a request to consider a second-story addition to the legal non-conforming duplex that is located at 234 West Avenue de Palazada. On the slide above, you can see the location of the duplex, and it's noteworthy that it's adjacent to a historic property that's located at 236 West Avenue de Palazada. The site is located in the residential medium zone and coastal overlay. The project is in addition to a 1,576-square-foot duplex. The duplex is non-conforming due to parking and setbacks. The proposal is to expand Unit A, 366 square feet, to a total size for the Unit A to be 902 square feet. The proposal involves a second-story addition, and you can see on the slide above the second story addition. The project design would change the 1950s, 1960s-style architecture to a cottage design. The second-story addition is designed with horizontal wood siding, composition roofing, and gable roof ends to convey that cottage design. A cultural heritage permit is required to allow additions to non-conforming structures provided the cumulative expansion is less than 50%. In this case, the 366-square-foot addition of Unit A is a 23% expansion. The cultural heritage permit is also required for projects that abut historic homes. As I mentioned previously, this project abuts a historic home at 236 West Avenue de Palazada. The project does comply with required development standards. It's noteworthy to point out that the project is setback far from the street and the historic residence to reduce massing impacts upon the historic resource and the neighborhood. It is setback 23 feet from the historic home. That's between the two closest corners of the addition and the historic home, and 28 feet from setback from property line, front property line. Staff is recommending approval of the project for the following reasons. The project will not have negative visual or physical impact to the historic home because of the location, the size, and the design of the addition. The location of a second-floor addition setback 28 feet from the front property line ensures that the addition will not have massing impacts upon the neighborhood. And the cottage design is compatible with the neighborhood, which exhibits Spanish 1950s, '60s-style buildings, mid-century, and cottage styles. There are a couple of conditions of approval that staff would like to add to the project. Condition 13 and 14 relate to a code enforcement issue that arose late last week. We were informed that there was a basement-level kitchen, which basically created a third unit. The homeowner has explained to me that she has owned the property for the past year, and she was unaware when she purchased the property that that was an illegal unit, and has agreed to these conditions to remove the kitchen as part of the project. That relates to condition number 13. Condition number 14 says that staff will go out to verify within a one-year period to verify that the project remains as a duplex. And condition number 15 relates to our standard condition concerning coastal commission review required prior to building permit issuance. And if necessary, I can read those into the record.
So regarding condition 15, is this -- do we know that they require coastal commission?
Yes.
They do?
Yes, they are indeed in a coastal canyon.
Oh, because they're in coastal.
It's one of our standard conditions of approval, but it was omitted, and actually, Commissioner Brown noticed that it wasn't included.
Good job.
Thank you for that.
Eglai.
Also, I would like to mention that we did receive three letters in opposition to the project, and those letters were distributed to the Planning Commission. The concerns primarily related to impacts to the adjacent historic structure, and there was a concern about impact to the residence to the northwest, that'd be the residence to the north side, that Spanish-style home that abuts the property.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions for Cliff?
Do you have any visuals that you could show us here? Other than one, as far as how it relates to the historic home, that would be an important visual to see.
Yes, so here is -- I'm sorry, this laser's not working, so I'll have to walk over. The existing duplex limits are this portion here, this arch here, and the second-story addition is this portion here, with a deck that wraps around that second-story addition. And the historic home is over here, and this point here between the two is that, let's say it's 23 feet.
Do you have any simulations of how it would actually would look next to the historic home, other than this particular diagram?
No, I do not.
That would be really helpful in the future, to have a visualization, to see how it would really relate to the -- this is an important historic home that we have here.
Can you zoom in on the area of the property? Just head up.
I saw that, I couldn't figure much of that out, though.
Paul, could you maybe repeat for us what the design review?
Sure, so the design review subcommittee did review the project, and during that review, the design review subcommittee in reviewing the cultural heritage permit is tasked with looking at compatibility with the adjacent historic property, and the design review subcommittee did support the design of the project. There was discussion about parking, but with regards to the project's compatibility with the neighborhood and impacts upon the historic resource, the subcommittee did not find that there was any impacts and recommended the project move forward to the Planning Commission.
And I think notably, the Historical Society did not file any concerns, or did not speak at the meeting with any concerns.
That's correct.
But they did attend, as is usual.
Yeah, they usually attend, and in this case, we just received some information from -- I think Larry had talked to you, Cliff, and to express his concern about parking, but he didn't have any concerns about the impacts on the historic structure.
That is correct, Chair Gordon.
Thank you for that, Larry Culberson.
One of the letters had a concern about caissons and the soil quality of the coastal canyon. I know we've got, usually have some conditions of approval that address that sort of thing, so maybe you could take a moment and speak to that and maybe address that concern.
Sure, so there's a condition of approval requiring that the project require all building permits is necessary. One of the things that will be required of the applicant is to show how the second-story addition, that weight of that second-story addition can be accommodated with the existing structure. The alternative would be to, you know, caissons, as you suggested. Did speak with the architect and the architect's engineer, and the architect's engineer had indicated that caissons would not be necessary with this project. indicated that caissons would not be necessary, uh, with this project.
And is that based on an assessment by a soil engineer or someone like that, or is that just a...
I would have to defer that to the architect.
Okay. So we can see how they relate to one another from above.
Well, I think, um, I just, I think it's helpful, because, um, I, I actually looked at this, uh, just so I can make sure to refresh my memory, relationship to, um, to the, um, other people, so that I can, um, have some, uh, to remind you about, um, the relationship, relationship, um, to, 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 um, to have a visual to see how, and it, uh, an addition is going to relate, uh, to the historic structure. And, uh, this is all nice and fine, but we don't have one...
So you mean the street view?
But this is all nice and fine, but we don't have a, uh, a visual about the second story and how it actually is going to look next to it, um, from various angles.
But you're thinking of the, so you're, you're, you're suggesting that we have, um, a street view that is a simulation?
That would be very helpful.
The architects have that program, I think, I've seen it, some do not, but not all.
Yeah, yeah, sometimes, sometimes we receive those, sometimes we don't.
Have you, Larry, you can, uh, imagine?
Right.
I think that we just thought it was typically so far offset in this particular case from the historic property, it has to be more, um, just, um, so it doesn't have a, it would be considered, obviously, a review, in fact, I think it's probably why the Historical Society wasn't concerned.
Right.
Yeah, it has a much larger separation of the...
Right, there is, there is separation there, except from the backyard, um, back area. Uh, and that would be interesting to see how that was going to affect the back there, because there's a wonderful garden in the back of the historic home, and how that would relate to, um, the addition there.
I think it's in, it's in the middle of the structure, um, Wayne, so, is that, that's correct, it's right, it's kind of, um, it's not all the way at the back?
You know, I, I've walked around the site, I actually haven't been on the historic property.
Go back to the topside view plan, you've shown through a brief, uh, clip.
I think the, uh, the owner of this project would probably be able to speak to the location of the garden.
I'm sorry.
I think the owner of the project would probably be able to speak to the, uh, location of the garden, or if the adjacent owners...
Yeah, my actual, the addition is in the central portion of the, um, of the duplex, right? It's in the central portion of the duplex, because it's right, it's, uh, right where the courtyard area is.
That's my understanding, but I'd like for the property owner to confirm that.
Well, the site plan, which is on page one of the, of the drawing along with the photograph, shows that, uh, the addition is, uh, way, far away from the back garden. It's located, you know, middle of the entire unit.
And the, and the deck overlooks the back, the historic garden.
Yeah. Here. So here's the addition, here's the historic, uh, residence and the gardens.
Right there.
It's back here, and the addition is...
Right, okay.
...place forward about, uh, I don't know, am I scaling real or...
No, that's fine.
About 20 or 30 feet.
Yeah.
Okay, um, if there are no more questions for Cliff, we'll invite the applicant to, uh, step forward. Yes, please. And just, uh, state your name and city of residence, just for the record.
My name is Malia Zulfakar. Good evening. My name is Malia Zulfakar, and I'm the owner of the 234 Palazada property. I purchased this property in August 2013 and moved here beginning of this year while commuting to San Luis Obispo to continue my academic assignments at Cal Poly, where I've been teaching for 20 years. So this is my downtime retirement place. There are two units, um, at the property, Units A and B. The former, uh, owner's, uh, 95-years-old aunt was residing in Unit A until September of this year. Unit B was previous, uh, previously used by the prior owners as a vacation rental, but it is my primary residence now. Unit, uh, A, which is 500 square feet, needs considerable upgrading. Further, my son has expressed interest in residing in the unit with the addition of a small loft on the top of the existing bedroom. This small 300 square feet addition will provide an ocean view and will add aesthetic value to the building. Moreover, every effort has been taken to avoid abstracting the historical building next to my property and to preserve the beauty and character of the entire neighborhood. Most importantly, the plan has met all regulations to remain in compliance with the city regulations involving setbacks, height, and related standards and requirements. In fact, my architect has suggested building it so that the addition will suit my needs, not necessarily be as big as what would someone else would want. This past weekend, a code compliance officer called to visit the property due to a suspicious report, uh, report about the downstairs of Unit B being used as a separate unit. I accommodated the officer, it was a call 8:30, and she was at my property by 9:30. The claim of downstairs, um, uh, of Unit B being used as a separate unit is simply fabricated and untrue. This is an unfounded speculation. Unit B is one unit. Here are a few reasons why. First, there's no wall separating downstairs from upstairs. There's a sliding glass door which connects both floors. This is because it is not a separate living space. Second, my family, and now there has been addition to the fam, uh, family, three dogs, they usually utilize downstairs when they come to stay. There's also a bedroom downstairs that I use when guests stay over. Currently, there's a family friend who needs a place to stay, and I have accommodated him. This guest room is the equivalent of giving someone a couch to sleep on, and I'm happy to do this for a family friend, but it is not treated as a separate unit. For example, I go downstairs frequently as that is where many of my belongings are stored. Next, I would like to address the code compliance officer's concern about the garbage disposal in the downstairs kitchenette. This kitchenette was there when I bought the property. Furthermore, the same kitchenette was plainly visible in the remodeling plan of Unit B that was submitted and approved by the Planning and Building Department of City of San Clemente, and, um, when Will came to do the final inspection, the approval is here. All I have done since then is upgrade the appliances in this pre-existing kitchenette. Having said this, when the code compliance officer saw the house, she informed me that the garbage disposal is not allowed. To this end, I'm very happy to remove the garbage disposal to Unit A, which doesn't have a functioning, uh, garbage disposal. Finally, in regards to parking spaces, I live alone and own one car, and I can assure you that marital status will not change. There will be always one car. Thus, there should be no concern regarding parking in the presence of additional cars, because I have a two-car garage for myself, and the driveway, driveway has sufficient space for additional parking spots. I appreciate your time and your support for this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any question?
No, thank you very much. Okay, then, uh, we also have a card from Felix Low, I believe.
Have we opened the public hearing? Yes.
Could we, any planning commissioner?
Um, no.
Al.
Uh, no, we have not opened the public hearing. Thank you for that reminder.
I'd like to...
So, let me, excuse me, just one second, just a, an issue of protocol. So I'll, um, open the public hearing, and I'll invite, uh, Mr. Low to speak. Sorry.
Sit down.
You, you may, you may go ahead.
Okay. Um, good morning, planning commissioner. Appreciate your time being here in this rainy weather. I want to introduce myself as Felix Low, the architect for this project, 234 West Palazada. As a resident of San Clemente, I appreciate the city awareness to see that each individual historical home has value, value that meant to keep it that way and to be concerned of any new development that would impact, um, this historical house. My approach to this project, um, was to respect adjacent, only handsome residents and to fulfill my client need to enjoy ocean view and around our home. The upper story addition is 300 square feet, and we kept the structure away from the neighboring historical building much as possible. The original residence was built in 1952 and aesthetically did not complement the existing neighborhood area. I wanted to enhance the home character by introducing some architectural detail that would give it a distinct cottage style. I do hope this completed home will be an asset to this neighborhood. How many questions?
Are there any questions for Mr. Low? Thank you very much, sir. Sorry to have interrupted you.
Okay, no problem.
All right, uh, we don't have any more cards. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this item? Okay, please come forward, give your card to our recording secretary. And then go ahead and step to the microphone and state your name and city of residence.
My name is Cynthia Speed, and I live at 232 West Avenue de Palazada, and I'm here for pure selfish reasons. I, I live next door, and it's going to encroach my, my ocean view. Um, I do have concerns about, um, the roof line, um, if it could be a flatter roof, maybe it could work for us as well. I'm concerned about the windows, because our, this, it looks like a very spatial view with the clouds and the sky on the right-hand side, but we're very close. We're just a few feet away from each other, and I have concern about waving to my neighbor in the morning. I, I don't know, it's, it's pure selfishness, but, um, the, the other concerns are, are just, um, you know, and I can tell they've put a lot of thought into, uh, not encroaching on the only handsome property, which is maintained beautifully and is an asset to our neighborhood. And, um, and I appreciate that, um, but I, I think that it would, I think that it would be a problem in our neighborhood, and several of our neighbors are not happy about and oppose this, um, building plan. There is some concern with the engineering, uh, it's an old home, it's, um, was built in the 60s, I believe, and, um, concerns with the, um, I, I understand that there's no caissons in these homes. My, my neighbor on the other side of me has a home that was built about the same time, and she said, "We don't have caissons in our home." So I'm, I'm just curious how the construction of an upper level, um, could be sustained, just the weight of it, the breadth of it, uh, under the existing, um, foundation. So I guess those are my basic concerns. Um, thank you.
Well, we appreciate you sharing them with us. Uh, I, I do want to make you aware of, and you might already know this, um, that, um, we are not, uh, able to protect, um, private views, um, although we, we do sympathize, you know, I think we've all been in your shoes, um, you know, having a, uh, you know, some of our view removed by another, by another structure, so we understand that that's a, that's a difficult thing, but we appreciate you sharing your perspective.
I have to, I have to.
Yeah. Okay, all right, all right, thank you very much. Um, so if there's no one else coming forward, we'll close the public hearing, and Cliff, if you wouldn't mind coming back up for a moment, um, and just, uh, we, uh, there was an issue that Larry Culberson had expressed some, uh, concern about, which was the parking. If you would, um, address that for us, and, um, uh, then, um, uh, give staff's perspective on, um, if you're comfortable with the, uh, conditions of approval addressing the issue about the, um, potential, uh, occupation of the, the basement as a, as a third unit.
Sure.
And then the, then the last issue would be just if you would touch on the issue of whether, uh, caissons are necessary, um, and if this meets all the building code requirements.
Sure. Uh, sorry, I got a little distracted by the beeping.
[laughing]
So with regards to, uh, parking, you, you can see on the site plan that's on the screen right now, um, there's only two parking spaces, uh, dedicated for, for the use. The, the non-conforming ordinance does allow for expansions of non-conforming structures, and, um, they're able to maintain that non-conforming parking element. Uh, in this case, the, the addition is fairly small, um, and it's the homeowner's intent to, uh, have it for her, her family. Um, it, it meets code requirements, so with that, staff would recommend approval of it, um, based upon, uh, you know, the small scale of the project, and then it, it meets code requirement for parking.
I'm sorry, while, while the beeping was going on, the other two questions were, um, uh, could you indicate, um, the, could you address the engineering issues of the caissons, and then also, um, what, uh, explain, uh, why you're comfortable with the conditions of approval addressing the code compliance issue?
Yes. So with regards to, uh, caissons, as I mentioned earlier, the building department does have standard conditions of approval associated with, with, um, projects, this one being included, that require that they substantiate how the project will, um, set, you know, satisfy that extra load. So at building permit issuance, they're required to provide all those calculations. Typically, when we're going through this discretionary review process, we condition it, let them know they have to show us that, demonstrate that to us. Um, with a discussion with the architect, he indicated that, um, his engineer doesn't feel that caissons will be needed with this project. If they are, um, they'll be required, and it'll, that'll be reviewed by our, um, our soils engineer, so.
Okay, so the, um, the concern that might be shared by a number of neighbors as to whether this will be, uh, a, a solid, uh, project, um, that will be addressed, uh, before construction begins?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Are there any que, other questions for Cliff? Oh, and I'm sorry, the code compliance issue.
The code compliance issue, yes. So after discussing with, um, Malia about the, uh, she was unaware of that the kitchen would create that as a third unit, and, um, she's more than willing to eliminate the kitchen as part of a condition approval for the project. So, uh, staff feels pretty comfortable that, um, with this new owner, that third unit will be eliminated.
And you, uh, you also, one of the conditions also involves you checking within a year to make sure that...
That's correct. We'll inspect within a year's time to verify that there is no, uh, additional unit on-site.
Okay, all right. Any other questions, staff? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, so, uh, I'll invite discussion or, um, a motion. And I'll, I'll just say briefly, uh, 'cause it looks like we're ready for a, for discussion. I think, um, uh, you know, and I appreciate, um, your initial concern, Wayne, for wanting to look at this from, from above to make sure that there isn't a great deal of impact on this home, and I think that's, um, one of the things that's always a concern for me with, with the, um, uh, with development next to the historic structures, um, is issues such as how does it, uh, impact their living space, the, you know, the gardens, um, perhaps a courtyard, um, and that's one of the things I liked about this project, is because, um, the, um, the addition is on the other side of this project's courtyard, so it gives a nice amount of breathing space to the historic structure. But I do think it's very important to, uh, to look at those issues carefully, so I think it was a good idea to, um, uh, to drill down on that issue.
Just a quick statement and, you know, the concern about structural and all, we're really looking at design, not the structural, and we just want to make sure that it complies with all the standards. I think the conditions do that and I think Felix has done a good job keeping this in the middle of the property and I'm in support of the project.
I'd like to further stay. Actually, why we're here tonight is a cultural heritage permit, not a structural review at all, it's how it impacts the historic structure, which I think the architect and the owner have tried to accommodate that by various offsets. Unfortunately, for the other neighbor, we don't protect the views, which we know, lost years and I know that. So, so I'll be in support of that because we can make the findings that it does not affect the cultural structure to the south of it. And that's all we're here for, other than that. That, because the location of this property, that's the only reason we're here, otherwise it would be a normal building department approval. And I think, yeah, the conditions are here for all the normal engineering calculations that have to be submitted by the architects, engineer to prove the loads and all that stuff, which is pretty standard. So I think, I can make the findings for the cultural heritage permits.
Does it make a motion?
Sure. I'll. I move we approve the resolution number PC 14-049, a resolution of the planning commission approving cultural heritage permit 14-275 Zofa Car Addition, a request to allow a second story addition to a legal non-conforming duplex that is adjacent to historic house located at 234 West Avenue to Palazada with the additions of conditions 13, 14, and 15 as presented by staff in the briefing.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, passes six zero. By the way, I just wanted to commend staff for being proactive and having those conditions of approval ready for us tonight. Thank you. Okay, so that brings us to new business. We'll be looking at the downtown core license plate survey was taken in August of 2014 and that will also be presented by Mr. Jones.
Thank you. Good evening again, commissioners. Some of the slides that you're going to see this evening is going to be a little redundant for you because you've seen them previously during some of our study session discussions about parking in the downtown area, and I'll get into those very shortly. Also, I wanted to mention that our intern Catherine Moran really wanted to be here, but unfortunately she had a networking opportunity. She's looking for permanent employment, so she will not be here this evening to help me present the, the findings, but all due credit to, to her in helping us put this report together. She deserves a lot of the credit.
Well, the interns were instrumental in gathering the data as well, isn't that correct?
Gathering the data, yes. They were the ones that were driving the streets, videoing the lots and the streets and getting the data that we needed, so.
That's great. Yeah, that's a really good job utilizing them as a, as a resource for this because I know it can be a very expensive endeavor for the city.
Yes, it was definitely the affordable option and we got a lot more work out of them than just this survey too, so we're pleased.
Good.
So just a little outline of the presentation. First, I'll go over the need for parking in our downtown. Then I'll go into what some of the common myths are that folks have about parking. And really, this is, you know, the benefit of the viewers that are watching on TV. Like I said, you've, you've seen many of these, this, this presentation. Then we'll go into what some parking management strategies are. I'll briefly talk about the 2013 occupancy count survey that was done last year in August. That'll be a little refresher of what some of the findings were there. And then we'll get into the 2014 license plate survey, the findings there. And then I'll get into our recommendations that staff has. Some of them are carryovers from previous studies that we've done. Some of them are new, based upon new information that we found out as a result of this license plate survey. So as you know, for downtowns, parking's part of the recipe. The goals for our downtowns include high density, compact pedestrian-friendly areas. They have a strong sense of place and they take advantage of the historical and cultural features. And as a big part of supporting all this, you need to, of course, plan for parking. And I wanted to mention that parking supply, even though in our downtown, our parking supply is heavily utilized, that really is indicative of good things. That means we are having flourishing businesses, businesses are doing well. We have customers, visitors, tourists, all coming to our downtown. The services are being well-used and needed and our downtown is very vibrant and active, much more so it was, you know, many years ago. I'm not sure what that little thing is on the.
I was trying to get that off, but I don't know where.
Okay.
I was doing something earlier and just got stuck on this.
Gotcha. So there, we'll go into some of these parking myths and the.
I'm going to test it up to you.
And these park, these parking myths that I'm going to talk about, these aren't things that our staff just came up with. These are things that planning professionals, folks that dedicate their entire lives to studying parking, which is a pretty interesting subject, I think, but they spend a lot of time and they've come up with these parking myths. So Donald Shoup, he's the professor at the urban, for U L A, he's urban planning professor there, author of The High Cost of Free Parking, wonderful, wonderful book that talks about parking and how it relates to downtown areas and the high cost of providing that parking. And then there's various sources that are out there that all are looking into revitalizing downtowns and one of those sources, the Downtown Research and Development Center. And much of the information that you're going to see with these parking myths came from Donald Shoup and, and from this resource here. So all credit due to them. So the first myth is that all parking must be in front, in front of the business. And that might be true in some shopping center areas, but in a downtown area, the reality is people will park where the parking is provided. Traditional downtowns have that grid pattern, which we have in San Clemente, that allows for that rear lot parking behind the main street businesses. And that's desirable because then it doesn't interrupt that pedestrian flow as you're walking up and down the, the business district. You're going from shop to shop to shop. You're not having to pause for cars to drive by or to, to, or have that interrupt, interruption where there's no longer anything to look at except for a sea of parking. So it's important that with looking at where this, these, this parking is off-site, that you provide signage, lighting, and access to that parking because it is located behind the main, main strip. These images here show how parking does not negatively impact the pedestrian activity. Here, those two photos, you can see people walking up and down Del Mar. There's no curb cuts there. There's no cars that are interrupting that pedestrian flow. And there's, of course, interesting shops and businesses to look at as you're walking up and down Del Mar. And then here's some images that, not, not as attractive, but this is where our parking is located in our downtown. Strategically located, one street off of the main drag, we have a number of parking lots. And, and just looking at these parking lots, you can see there, there's not much pedestrian interest to, to a parking lot. The next myth is that people don't like to walk. And the reality is most motorists do not mind parking a block or two to get to their destination. That is provided the downtown is clean, well-maintained, it's got occupied storefronts, all those things that make people feel safe and it creates a enjoyable walking experience. And walkable downtowns, they're, they're kind of trendy right now. People miss something that's real and historic and walkable. Downtowns, real downtowns are things people desire and want to be involved in and be Another myth is that parking should be equally available to everyone. And the reality is that it's essential to segment parking motorists into different groups and prioritize them accordingly. The customers and shoppers are the highest priority because they generate the greatest benefit with the lowest turnover and the lowest cost. Other visitors and residents, employees, park and ride commuters, those fall in importance. And it's common for employees and owners to be the ones that park the furthest. I wanted to provide this example. This is, we were curious about how far some employees walk within our community. And so we decided to survey the fishermen, some of the employees that we could speak with. So our interns went out there and found the fishermen's employees that were wearing their fisherman sweater and asked them where it is that they park. And we found out that they, a lot of them like to park on Victoria above the meters, meter parking area, meter parking area, so they don't have to pay for meters or for, for parking permits. And that distance is 1,161 feet to just where the meters stop. So it's common, we're seeing employees already in our commercial districts that are walking some great distances.
One, one comment about that, I frequent the beach trail a lot, you know, between North Beach and the pier. And it's really common for me to see fishermen employees to be riding their bikes or walking along the beach trail to get back to their cars or their homes or wherever they might be. So that's actually another avenue. You know, that could be another green avenue here.
Yeah. And much further as well. Yeah.
All right.
Just a comment on that. Those are pretty physically fit employees. I don't think that represents the typical business in San Clemente.
That, that may be the case. We can, we can try another larger employer in the downtown and see if we can.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. I'd like to comment on that as well. I, I think that the construct of the infrastructure there doesn't allow really for employees to do easy parking. I mean, I'm not sure they're winning medals because they walk so far. They don't, if there was public lots where they didn't have to pay and they were closer, I would bet that they would probably park there. So I, I'm not sure that this is really that telling as a comparison to downtown, which does have parking lots where employees can park relatively close instead, so.
Well, I think what, what Cliff is, is trying to illustrate is the, is the concept of, you know, the parking strategy in moving the employees further out so that the customers can be closer in. And I think you're just trying to demonstrate that some employees, those who are physically fit, and I actually talked to Cliff about that same issue because I, I know that there's a kind of a, a different demographic in the downtown, but that the majority of the employees are able to walk and able and willing to walk to parking lots that are further away, either in this case so that they can avoid having to pay the meters or, which is a parking strategy in and of itself, or, you know, find available parking on a, at the peak hours when they need to park.
That's correct. That's well stated. I don't know if I could even top that.
Excuse me, I have a question about that, though. Do you, I mean, here, it's, it's a good example. There's nothing really close that you can park without paying. And so if you're young people working at the fishermen's, you know, hiking up to them and parking where it's not expensive, makes a lot of sense. But do you have evidence that this same axiom applies for downtown where they can actually park fairly close on lots that are good all day long?
The only point we're trying to make is that it's, it's common in downtown areas to have employees park the furthest away. And we're just trying to show that that's actually happening with a business in, in our community. That's really all we're trying to, to show there.
I, I hate to throw water on it, but, you know, I'm, I'm down at Park Semper Fi every day doing whatever. And there are a number of fishermen's employees with parking passes who park in the parking lots. And at one time when there were, when there was a real estate office on, just across from the fishermen's, those employees had parking passes and they parked in the metered zones all day. So, you know, just, just to let you know.
Yeah, again, the point isn't to say that people don't park as close as they can if they have the opportunity. The point is.
They, they will.
That people can walk farther, from a farther distance and do if they're required to do so.
Well, at the fishermen's, excuse me for a moment, at the fishermen's, as a matter of fact, they're, they are required by their employer not to park in the parking lot, but they do. Okay, so.
Well, you're saying that they have a requirement, the city's laid on, they've made an economic choice to pay the $50 or $100 annual pass, depending on, you know, if they're a resident or not. But the resident, we have an agreement or we have some condition with fishermen.
No, we don't have that. No, 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 that's not what I said. That's not what I said. I said that the employer themselves has a, a requirement that their employees do not park in the, in the, in the parking lots there.
Okay. They, but there's just a difficult time enforcing that or policing.
Well, I don't think they know about it.
Well, I, I think that's a private issue. I think we're, I think we're, I think we're getting into a granular issue. I, I think Cliff's point, as, as I stated, was to, and as Jim stated, was to provide an example here in our community where a, a number of the employees are willing to, to park further away. And, and the strategy, I think, that motivates this portion of this employee population to do that is to avoid the parking meters or because they're required by their employer.
That's correct, which are both the parking management strategies. So another myth is that, and this is common to down, a lot of downtown areas, is it's difficult to find parking in the downtown. And the reality is rather than focusing on how many spaces that we have, so looking at the supply, is think about how they relate to the downtown and that gets back into managing the existing supply that you have. So there's definitely ways to improve upon the existing supply that a, a community has of parking. And that could be with signage. Can people find the off-site parking or parking that's located, you know, further away from a core of a, of a downtown area? Connectivity, are they easily accessible? Is there pasos? Is there pass-throughs? Easy ways to get people from, you know, is it circuitous route or is it more of a direct route? Are they in a safe place? You know, how, how well-lit is that place? And how direct is the pedestrian path? And then design aesthetics, is it a pleasant experience? That all relates to where people choose to locate, to park. Another one is that everyone's entitled to free parking and as we know, parking's not free. The construction cost is somewhere between $10,000 and $40,000 per space plus ongoing operating and maintenance costs. And so the reality is every single space, whether it's public or private, entails a cost for developers, owners, tenants, and taxpayers. And parking fees are actually factored into the rents, the lease fees, sales prices, and taxes. And so the parking experts argue that there's nothing wrong with charging for parking. And that could be through time limits, permit parking, having a permit to park all day or whatever the hours are, have a metered parking. And the idea is that if there's revenue that's generated from the, within the district based upon parking, those funds could be filtered back into improving that area. And a lot of downtowns, as you are aware, do this.
Wayne.
I have a somewhat different viewpoint about these experts or professionals. I don't think they've ever come to San Clemente. You know, the outlet center is going to be opening with 3,000 free parking spaces. They will not be charging for parking. And for us to even consider charging for the downtown parking is, is just foolish. That's, to, to me, it would be an economic disaster for those stores down there if the city even entertained the thought of doing something like that.
And I, I don't, and I don't think that's part of.
I know, I'm, I'm just.
Staff's proposal.
That's correct.
I think, I think.
Well, we're here to, we're here to express our opinions with regard to certain things. And I, and when an expert says that it's, that parking, everyone is, no, everyone is not entitled to free parking, I want to express my view on that. And I expect, because I know this, this issue has come up. Because I know this, this issue has come up time and time again down downtown.
But that's, but that's, I think what Cliff is doing is illustrating a principle of parking. And I think, I think the issue is that parking, this is a strategy that can be used to meet certain objectives, and it depends on what your objective is. And I, I don't think that the objectives that we have at this time have prompted staff to make a recommendation.
I'm not saying that staff made a, is making a recommendation. However, I'm, I'm expressing a view here with regard to parking. And the professionals have, have one view, they've never been to San Clemente, but I must say that it would be a disaster for the downtown at this point to do that.
I think Wayne's disagreeing with B, there's nothing wrong with charging with parking for the downtown. He's applying it specifically to the downtown, and in this case, it may not be the right fit.
No, exactly. And I'm not challenging, I'm not challenging what he's saying. I'm expressing a view here with regard to parking in the downtown area and paying for it, especially when the outlet center's going to be opening with 3,000 plus free parking spaces.
But the overriding point here is that parking is not free either way. It costs money. It costs us, you know, we paid for the leases of the parking spaces for certain lots, we paid for the ongoing.
That's correct.
For other lots. So, even though the public is in being charged, in a sense, there is, you know, a public charge.
There's a secondary charge.
We pay for the cost of the parking.
Yes, and some members of the community are currently paying for parking downtown. Residents are paying, and also some employees are paying through permit parking. So, I, you know, I think it's, you know, it's, it's something that we have to look at, whether it's appropriate or not appropriate for, for any of those groups to be paying. And Don, you?
I wanted to make the same thing that you're, what you're making, Julia, this is just a, it's a concept, it's one of the ways of controlling the situation. We have meters all over town and we put them in appropriately here and there. And so, it is a proper way to do it. I, I would agree with Wayne that with the outlet mall, at this time, with the outlet mall coming online with 3,000 spaces, if you do the adverb test of who, what, why, where, how, and when, now would not, not be a good time to consider meter parking. Maybe the next, for the next three to five years, while this outlet mall opens up and the downtown, you know, will languish and rebalance, and maybe three to five years, it would be after things readjust, time to consider if. The second point I would like to make was the meters that we used to have downtown were removed at the request of the merchants.
Oh, yeah. And they rallied against it.
And so, to my, to my way of thinking, with that history in mind, that going forward in the downtown core area, that over time, we would only consider it if the DBA themselves came forward and said, "It's time to reconsider meters." And so, I think that's the second proviso in this particular sensitive area. But I agree with what staff's trying to make, that meters are a way of controlling and paying for parking.
Yeah, that was the only point we wanted to make, is a management strategy. It may not be appropriate right now, but.
Jim and then Michael, but go ahead.
It may not be appropriate for the downtown, but, you know, it's staff's obligation to bring up what these strategies are, and then the policymakers will make the decision. So, that's really the purpose of us identifying the, the strategy.
And I think, I think it is a tool in the toolbox that we don't want to just throw away without some consideration. There, you know, the outlet mall, it's a bit of an unknown quantity, but it's a different experience, it's a different parking experience, you know, you're not right next to the merchants like you are downtown. So, there are, there are important differences that we want to say, "Well, you know, maybe this is or isn't a tool that we should consider." I just don't think we should take it off the table because we've got a lot of, we've got a lot of issues and a lot we potentially can do to at least reduce the parking friction down there without even building any more parking spaces potentially. But when it comes to meters in particular too, there are, there are new technologies with parking and parking meters that are, that are rising, something actually we didn't have in the, in the bullet points and the recommendations. But something to look at is parking meters that are highly customizable and that are based on, you know, that it can charge you automatically. So, if you're down there and we say you get two hours for free, you know, you have the little app, but if you're there for more than two hours, great, we're going to charge you, you know, three bucks for the third hour. So, there are, you know, instead of just saying, you know, "If you park here, you've got to put in your nickel," or your quarter now, as the case may be, there are other options available to us, again, in that toolbox, to say, "We can run these meters in a different way so that parking perhaps is free in certain parts of the day." You know, parking, it gets more expensive if you want to be there six hours, you can be there six hours, but that six hours might cost you a lot of money. And we just don't want to throw away those as potential solutions to some of the issues that we've got going on down downtown, because it is, it is such a difficult problem with the space we have to put in more spots and things like that.
And Michael.
I guess I don't, I don't see where we're going with this. I mean, if, if the issue is we don't have enough parking, and we're trying to come up with ways that there'll be more parking opened up, this is not the solution. This solution is a way of putting money in the coffers. You know, I, I was involved with a parking program at California State University Fullerton for almost 20 years, and we made tons of money off of this, because the students would put tons of money into it because they want to park there as long as they could. If, if the strategy is that you put short-term meters in so that people can't linger in a spot, maybe that's a different story, that might be something that I buy, but I don't buy this making money from parking meters. It wouldn't be a cash cow, and it's a huge issue of maintaining it and getting around and getting the money and doing all of that. So, you know, I think as a tool, one must really look at this very closely to say, "Is this really an issue of opening up more parking, or do we need to make more money for the city?" And, and, you know, I'm not sure what that message is, but I'm not seeing that fixing our apparent shortage of parking.
And I think just to clarify, especially for those at home who haven't had the benefit of reading our staff report, that, that is not something that staff is recommending at this time. While there are some recommendations that have to do with permit parking fees, there certainly is no recommendation having to do with parking meters. And I think, I think that's, I agree with Jim, it's an important issue that at some time in the future, we're going to have to look at closely. I also agree with, you know, both Wayne and Don, that it's something that we really don't want to be looking at right now, and I think staff agrees, and they're not suggesting that. I think they're just giving a primer on parking strategies, partly for our benefit, but I think also so that those at home can understand some of the rationale of what they're recommending today. So, why don't we move on to the next strategy?
Thank you, Chair Darden. This, the next myth is that what we call the "Fill the Dreams" approach. So, if you build it, they'll come. So, when looking at some of those parking lots that we have in our downtown area, realize that that's not a downtown attraction, it's not what gets people to come to the downtown. It's just a component of the overall approach. You need to provide parking for visitors, patrons of your downtown, but parking in itself is not the attractive thing. And, you know, we looked at a few communities during our study session that had a sea of parking and how ugly those communities looked when you had parking lot after parking lot after parking lot, and occasionally a building to look at, and.
I think your example was parts of Detroit, I think you said.
That's correct, yes. And it wasn't too attractive. But unfortunately, that, that slide did not make the cut, so I got rid of it. Well, actually, one of the pictures made the cut. So, the top picture is actually in Detroit, and you can see how you've got a lone building and parking around it, some green space. It's, they have a policy of encourage as much parking as possible, and it makes the area feel more unsafe and less desirable, and there's not really a whole lot to look at in their downtown area. So, you know, also, too much parking discourages people from walking downtown. For those reasons I mentioned, there's not really, when you have a lot of parking, there's really nothing to look at, there's nothing of interest. Looking at the image below, the, this is actually an example in our downtown, and no offense to this business or property owner, it's just the overall concept when looking at the way this parking lot is provided there at the front and the business behind, you can see how it interrupts the pedestrian interaction and continuity on the street. And you can imagine, as you're walking down Del Mar, you probably might stop and make sure a car's not about to approach within, into that parking lot. So, you know, the idea is to manage the existing parking supply that we have, not to get a lot of parking that makes our downtown less of an interesting place. So, one of the, you know, the idea is to manage, manage what you got, manage the existing parking supply that we have. So, what are some of these parking management strategies? We already hit upon a few. Time limits are one. Having employees park outside the downtown core a little bit further, having them walk into the downtown. Encouraging the off-site lease agreements or shared parking agreements, and we've seen a number of those come through the planning commission. The city leasing the private parking lots for public use. We've leased a number of private lots to make them open for public use. We see once they're open for public use, they're a lot more heavily utilized, the parking lot is more efficiently utilized. Providing bicycle accommodations, one of our future general plan implementation measures has to do with encouraging more bicycle parking, make it as part of required parking. And although it may not be appropriate for San Clemente, it is a parking management strategy, parking meters. And again, we're not suggesting it unless the policymakers or the DBA wants it. If the community wants it, then it's something that could be considered. So, I just wanted to provide now a little refresher, go back to the downtown parking counts that we did back in 2013.
Excuse me just a second, Cliff, I think.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Cliff. I just want to ask, up to now in the presentation, you know, you're kind of like, you know, taking a little tax, so I wanted to ask, can you talk a little bit about how the residences of the T-zone, you know, 100 block in Del Mar, places like that, how they fit into this picture? Because we did talk about employees, we talked about customers, we talked about owners, but, you know, we do have residents there. And so, I kind of wanted to get a picture of how they kind of fit into this puzzle.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. So, yeah, we do have a number of residences that are within the downtown area, and a number of them don't have parking for their, the units that they occupy. So, we do have residents that have parking permits and they, they park in our downtown area. Obviously, when looking at prioritization as to providing parking for different user groups, the shoppers are, you know, one of the top priorities, but residents are right there as well. So, when looking at these parking management strategies, it's important to consider those residents that live in the downtown area as well.
Yeah, it's kind of interesting, because I emailed Cliff on that, since I was walking around there this afternoon, and I looked at the Hotel San Clemente, and I think they probably, they have a small parking lot, but I think they probably have a requirement for maybe 50 spots. I don't think they have enough for the, for the hotel. So, there's quite a, I think I asked for the number, I think, you know, there's probably a pretty good sized number of residents considering some of those buildings down there in the 100 block, it's more than, a larger number than you would think when you really start thinking about some of those buildings that are there.
Yeah, I get, I think this is, you know, probably a conversation for a little bit later on this evening, but as we talk about recommendations on changing, you know, hours of operation of, you know, various parking lots, there's a question of, there's how many residents, for instance, are parking in some of those lots, and how are they affected by that? Because I don't think even in the study sessions we had before, we didn't really pull those into the mix.
Very good point.
Yeah. And I'm sorry, Wayne, I didn't.
Sure. Before we get into the downtown parking counts, you know, we've skipped over something, I think, that, that parking strategies, which is very important, and that I asked Petch about, provide each of us information with regard to parking garage down there, because I don't think any discussion with regard to parking the downtown area is complete unless we talk about a parking garage. First of all, I want to say that I think the city has done an incredibly commendable job about leasing these parking lots and providing that type of parking. That is strategy, I think, that was just really commendable and extremely important to do. But we already, and I'm not going to get into too much about the garage itself, but this was an intriguing, when this first came out several years ago, this was sort of intriguing, because I wanted to really take a look at it. But it's, it's important to talk about, when we talk about strategies, talking about the parking garage there and what, what that means. And this is the parking garage that would be in the community center down there. And currently, we have 87 stalls down there right now. And there are two proposals. One is a two-level structure that would provide 134 stalls, and a three-level structure that would provide 190 stalls. And, and at that time, when this was done in 2006, the cost was, we had here $50 a square foot. We usually do it by per.
Stall.
Per stall instead of per square foot. But if, if we did it by per square foot in today's dollars, for example, the two-level would cost about $2.5 million, and the three-level would cost, in our, in today's dollars, would cost about $4.3 million. So, you know, I just want to bring this out because we always, and I know people have always talked about a garage down there, and certainly, and if you go to a DBA meeting, you know, this is one of the things that they have talked about is a, is a parking garage. But the, but the bottom line is, where do we have the money for it, you know? And that's not our decision to make, that's a policy decision to make. But, and I think it's important to bring that up and just to throw these figures out, because, you know, this is, this is really important for that.
Don.
Yeah, your question was great, and they did pass it to all of us, which I got into a very good review of it. In fact, now would be a perfect time, given money, to build a structure down there, since the library's out of operation, you might as well, you know, since we can't use the library, build a parking lot while we're there right now.
That's too late.
But the decisions were not made because of the money issues, and I guess we've always heard about the beach parking pot, we always beach parking, and the library lot was too far away from the beaches. But I, you know, I'm glad you brought it up, because it's probably something that could have, should have, would have, but they're not cheap. Thank you.
Michael.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really confused about this particular slide, because I'm not sure what it tells me. Like I said, I've got a lot of experience in parking a lot of cars in a certain amount of space, and generally, it all comes down to how many cars and how many spaces. So, I can't figure out what this is telling me. Is this telling me that we have enough parking, or is this telling me that we don't have enough parking? And if we don't, how much are we short? If we're good, how much are we good for? This doesn't connect to me to be a tool to gauge this problem. I don't, I don't see how this equates to, "Do we have a parking problem, or don't we have a parking problem? If we do, what's the extent of it?" You know, am I missing something here? I just, I don't see what this is saying.
Well, I think that's a, a good, it gives a good opportunity for Cliff to go ahead and present this slide, since we haven't looked at it yet, and perhaps go into a bit more detail than you intended about what it conveys.
Okay, that sounds good. And unfortunately, I've only, I've got limited information on slides on this, because this was what we did back in 2013, so it's more of a refresher. But as part of attached to your staff report, I did provide the entire report, and goes into a lot of detail, so that, that is there. But looking at 2013 and the downtown parking counts, and that slide you can see there, in 2013, we found that the counts were shown to be the highest on record in terms of both total occupancy and percentage of spaces occupied. And overall, when you're looking at the district, since 2003, we've seen that there's a sufficient number of public and private spaces throughout the downtown area, but the downtown core is the most heavily impacted. And, and to address Commissioner Smith, your question about what you're seeing on the slide there, the areas in blue, those are areas where, in which at the peak demand in August of 2013, where we had occupancies of 40% or less. So, those are kind of those areas where there was excess parking. So, that's, that's kind of what's being shown there. Really, that, the reason why we had that there was just to show that, you know, the parking is being well utilized. Overall, the summer peak was Thursday, 1:00 PM at 70%. So, that means the entire district, the peak was that, that 1:00 PM time with a 70% utilization. That's looking at private and public parking. That's looking at private and public parking. What we're noticing, the heavy impacts is in that downtown core area. And generally, there are two, there are two peak occupancies in the summer, a 1:00 p.m. and a 7:00 p.m. The 7:00 p.m. is one, a new emerging one, we believe it's because of the restaurant popularity of the downtown. And Thursday and Saturday are the two busiest days. That was in 2013. So that information was helpful for us when we were doing our license plate survey, because we were able to find out what were the busy days, and to make sure that we surveyed on those days.
Jim?
Just, Michael, because you didn't have the benefit of being on the Planning Commission when we went through this in detail, a real quick summary, you know, you asked, is there enough parking, or is there not enough parking? So they answered that question the best I can, in two sentences or less. The private parking lots, we find there is a surplus of parking, they're underutilized. The public lots, for the most part, are, at peak times, are at 85% occupancy, which is the tipping point of where it becomes very inefficient. Above that point, you're looking around and searching for parking spaces. And the on-street parking is at 90%. So that downtown core, Del Mar, you know, you're going to find that mostly occupied during peak times, and all the key public lots as well. So, the reason why, the perspective of a lot of the shop owners and a lot of the people that come to, you know, looking for parking in the downtown, is they're looking for public parking spaces. They're not, they're not parking on private property. So for those people, it is a real, real impact on parking. There's a lack of parking in the public spaces right now, we're at capacity. Now, if we can free up more of the private spaces, which is one of our strategies, is leasing private parking lots, then that helps out and helps relieve some of the parking, because there's capacity there. So, that's a quick two-second, you know, summary of the situation.
Let me just, let me ask a question about that, Jim. So, overall, summer peak was Thursday, 1:00 p.m. at 70%. So does that mean 70% of both the public and the private lots are utilized at 70% at the highest peak? Is that what that means?
It means that if there's 900 spaces in the entire parking pool, counting public and private, it's at 70%. When you drill down on that, you'll find that the public lots are more like, you know, the 90%, and the private lots are probably more like 60%.
So, what I'm gathering here is that, when it gets right down to the public parking, we have a shortage of something, that we really don't have enough public lots, is that correct? Public spaces?
I would say we're at capacity, yeah.
At capacity.
Yeah, what we're noticing is that that core, as Jim mentioned, is heavily utilized. And so with some of these strategies that we'll be looking at, we're trying to see if we can free up some of that parking in the core, and so we'll get into what some of those strategies are.
Yes, Wayne.
I just have a couple of questions for clarification. I know this is for 2013, but the lot behind Sam's shoes, is that now, are we now leasing that?
No, that's still privately owned.
That's still privately, because they just resurfaced that and expanded.
Private again with somebody else in there?
Customers only.
Right now, it's still private parking. The DBA has talked with them to talk, see if there's a potential for a valet.
That's the valet, right.
Opportunity.
Yeah, and the other question I have, and this would be for 12C here, I believe that's Nick's. It was my understanding that Nick's lot is public.
Yes.
Okay, because it indicated here that it is, is it, it indicates here it's private.
I think it's actually, 12F is what that Nick's lot is, but I have to verify.
Okay. I don't think it's F. But in any event, it is, it is a, it is a public lot, because I did see a sign there saying, "The limit is for three hours."
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so that needs to be changed there. Thank you.
That was part of their original approval?
Yes, that's what I thought.
I'm sorry, Jim, go ahead.
And in all these, all the survey and all of our numbers and judgments are based on this summer peak period, correct?
Yes.
And my, and this is probably something for us to talk about once we get to the end of the presentation, but I have a bit of a concern, because in our circulation, mobility, circulation element general plan, we have a policy to design our circulation system for off-peak season. So I think it's important, we have to look at the peak and what that's doing, but we also, I think we have a directive, it seems to me, unless I'm mistaken, that we've got also an obligation to look at this from off-peak, and in order to, the goal is to preserve Spanish village character, but we need to take that into account as well, and design, make sure we design for that. So I didn't want to leave that out of the conversation either today.
Okay, thank you. All right, go ahead, Cliff.
So, moving on to what we were tasked with, with the city council, which is the license plate survey. So, the purpose of the survey is to determine how employees and long-term parkers impact the downtown core public parking supply. So it's, as I mentioned earlier, it's common practice in downtown areas to have employees and other long-term parkers to park the furthest, and have the most convenient, accessible parking provided to the customers and shoppers of the downtown. So we surveyed the downtown core, which included the 100 Block of Avenida Cabrillo, the 100 and 200 Block of Avenida Del Mar, the 100 Block of Avenida Granada, and the public lots on Avenida Cabrillo and Avenida Granada. We surveyed those areas, because those were the areas where primarily the businesses were, and there was, and we didn't survey the residential, primarily residential streets outside of that study area. So to determine how employees and long-term parkers impact the downtown core parking supply, our city staff interns surveyed how long cars were staying within the downtown core during that peak summer demand. We assumed that cars that were staying for a good portion of the day, five hours or more, are likely employees or other long-term parkers, such as residents, park-and-ride persons, beachgoers, et cetera. And one great benefit of this information is this data will also be helpful for our sheriff's department to see where cars are staying over posted time limits as well. So the figure on the right shows the current time limits of the streets and the lots surveyed. You can see where we have two- and three-hour limitations, and the light blue, and then the dark blue is where it's unlimited parking areas. Similar to, or based upon what we found out in 2013, we realized that Thursday and Saturday represent the peak days, so we surveyed Thursday and Saturday in August. And the city staff interns video-surveyed the streets and public lots every hour between 10:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. And the added benefit of the video recording was that our staff was also able to receive occupancy counts from the data.
I thought I heard you say that the dark blue and the light blue were unlimited, but the light blue is limited, right?
The light blue is a two- and three-hour limited parking, and the dark blue is the unlimited. So, now this, these two graphics show the on-street and public lot occupancy in 2013 versus 2014 in the downtown core. The red circled areas on the left are the areas that have high occupancy in both 2013 and 2014. So you can see that's up and down Del Mar, as well as the two city-owned all-day public lots off of Cabrillo. And the orange circled areas on the right show areas where occupancy increased by 7%. And the green circles show the areas where occupancy decreased by 17%. Overall, we found that occupancy in the downtown core decreased between 2013 and 2014. It went from 85% with 478 cars in 2013, to 80% with 456 cars in 2014. So just a little bit of a decrease.
But why would you think that would happen?
You know, it's not statistically significant, 5%. I can't really explain the decrease.
Mm-hmm. That's what I was going to guess.
Yeah, both were summer, August.
But it just happened to be that way?
So with regards to occupancy findings, we found that the Cabrillo Street and the public lots were more heavily utilized than the Granada Street and public lots. The all-day public lots off Cabrillo and Granada, lot on the west side, have a high occupancy, and you can see that, again, my laser's not working, but you can see that 6A off Granada is highly utilized, and then the two lots off Cabrillo, 8A and 7A, are heavily utilized, and then up and down Del Mar, where we have the two-hour time limit, of course, heavily utilized.
Oh, I think you're right, I'm sorry.
It's okay. These lots that are public lots that are highly utilized, in your, in your study, did you have an opportunity to chat with the sheriff's department to see what type of enforcement they provide for these lots? Especially the one, for example, on Granada, which is heavily utilized? Yes, that one. To see if, in fact, you know, if they actually are monitoring those and writing tickets.
Well, I did speak with them and let them know that we were doing this survey, and that, you know, some of the results might show areas where enforcement may need to be ramped up. My understanding is they're enforcing all the lots, but one of the great things of this study is that it'll identify areas where perhaps enforcement can be increased.
Well, and that's, that's why one of your recommendations is to, I'm sorry, Don.
Yeah, no, it says right in the report that increased enforcement is required for 6A, C, and 5B. And so I'm still going to, you know, make, you know, inroads to the sheriff's department to increase it there, so I just wanted to.
So, there's a lot of information going on here, but, and a lot of it's in your report. I'm sure the folks at home can't really see all the, all the columns and rows, but the takeaway here is with, what I wanted to provide here, is that less cars are parking in the downtown core on Thursday than Saturday. And however, we have a higher number of long-term parkers on Thursday than Saturday. The areas of concentration where cars are staying over five hours is circled in red, includes the all-day lots off Avenida Cabrillo, that's that 7 and 8A lots. Lot 8A was at 49% with 25 cars staying over five hours. Lot 7A was at 47% with 25, 27 cars staying over five hours. And the south side of Avenida Cabrillo was at 41% with 17 cars staying over five hours. And again, it's, these are all-day lots and streets where it's legal for cars to park all day, but it's just important to note that that is occurring.
So I guess part of the guineas is the people that were long-term parkers were parking where they were supposed to.
Mr. Moore, still sure what's going to happen?
Now, the graphic that you can see on the right there shows the percentage of cars that stayed over the time limits within the downtown core, and this will be the information that we are going to be sharing with our sheriff's department. Just highlighting the areas in blue, you can see that, well, overall, let me see.
I'm sorry, Cliff, could you go back to the previous page? I'm confused about, okay, 6C and 6F, I beg your pardon. I thought you were saying that 6A and 6, the two lots up in the 100 Block, that, at the top of the 100 Block, that they did not have any time limit, but those currently do have time limits, and those are the ones that require additional enforcement.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was having trouble reading the graph.
And I'm about to get into that.
I'd like to make just a point, kind of building on what I said previously, everybody is parking, not everybody's parking where they're supposed to, but the lion's share is, which means that enforcement, the enforcement we are doing has some effect. I mean, otherwise, they'd be parking all over the district. So, there's one for Officer Moody and his team, so.
Yeah, I mean, and I think you make a good point, Jim, because I think, you know, you can look at the fact that 8% are parking, you know, over the extended time, or you can look at the fact that 92% of the people are parking in the, you know, for the appropriate length of time in the lots as designated.
That's an excellent point. And so looking at this slide here, this shows the number of cars that are actually exceeding the time limits. You can see that the areas that are identified in green, those are all the areas where it's a low frequency of cars overstaying time limits. The areas in blue are the areas where it's still a low percentage, and I can get into what those percentages are. But the south side of the 200 Block of Avenida Del Mar, we saw 10% of cars were staying over the time limits, with 5% staying five hours or more.
I guess that number was stuck out to me, is it's a lot lower than, from the previous session we had, in the 2013, before we actually did the survey, we kind of thought there was a greater problem there, but the number was surprisingly low, in my own mind, I thought.
I agree.
Yeah. And then looking at Avenida Granada, on the north side of Avenida Granada, you can see that blue line on that slide, it had 16% of cars overstaying time limits, with 10% staying five hours or more. So that's an area where enforcement should be encouraged. And then there's that one three-hour lot off of Avenida Cabrillo, that was Lot 6A, had a high percentage of cars overstaying time limits as well.
8A, 8A. How can you start from this?
He started with that one, and then the one, 7C is the highest, isn't it?
Yes, 7C had a high frequency as well.
Is that an all-day lot?
No, that's a three-hour lot. 7A is the all-day.
10A is all-day.
Yeah.
And it looks like, over here on this section, I don't want to go into this, but it's.
Yeah, that was the 10% of cars staying over the time limit, so it's just right over, yeah, that's why it got to blue versus green. Barely blue. And so there's some areas there where additional enforcement can help, but as Jim mentioned, overall, people are really parking where they should be, and for the length of stay that they should be. So now we get into our parking management strategies. So we're trying to encourage what you can see in the upper slide, discourage what we have down below. So, that means managing our existing parking supply.
I'm sorry, Cliff, I just want, you might be going into this in one of your later slides, but I just wanted to ask, I know that you, you talked at length in the staff report, and you had a table, which was beautifully composed, but for people who have difficulty reading tables like me, it was challenging. I think it's Table 5, the one where you, you looked at the percentage of employee permits, and then you cross-referenced that with the number of lengthy stays in some of the all-day lots. Are you going to be going over that information, or do you want, if not, would you just want to give a quick synopsis of what you found?
Sure, and I'll, I'll go to this, let's see, I'm trying to see if I can have a slide to discuss that. Unfortunately, I don't have that table, but essentially, what we're showing there is that, and tell me if I'm hitting the point that you think is relevant, but we've, originally we saw that there was a number of lots that looked like there was people that were overstaying their time limits, and then once we factored into the, the point that those people were allowed to park there all day because they were employees, and we actually have to park there all day because they were employees, and we actually have employee passes for some of those lots that we lease, that are private lots that are open for public use, that number, number of people that we thought were overstaying time limits actually decreased because we realized those were employees that are allowed to park there all day long.
And you don't have that data for the residents who also have a similar permit?
Unfortunately, I do not.
Okay. That's why, I know we had discussed that earlier today, and I just think it's important for us to be aware of that and factor that into our analysis tonight.
How do you differentiate a residence pass from an employee pass?
It was, you just used the counts that you had for how many had been issued, is that correct?
A pass is a pass, right.
Well, what we were able to do with the employee passes is that we knew exactly where those employees are allowed to park, so we were able to net that out and assume that they were parking there all day. But with residents that have a pass where they could park in any of these lots, it's a little more difficult to net out where they're gonna be and how that impacts the overall parking supply.
Do we know the total number of permits issued?
I don't have that information, no.
No, that was, that was one of the questions.
I can-
Do we differentiate the parking passes? I mean, do they, a residence pass printed differently than this, the normal parking pass anywhere in town, or a parking pass is a parking pass?
Unfortunately, I don't have that information, I don't know.
I think so, I mean, I mean, we all have parking passes, so.
And I'll tell you, other cities do differentiate. Orange, particularly around the college, if you're a resident around Chapman, you get a pass that only allows you to park there. Students with their parking passes can't park in that location. And they've got ones for parking in the downtown circle and whatnot, so.
And that's-
You can certainly use that as a strategy.
Yeah, that's interesting, 'cause I just assumed they were all marked differently, so that's a good, that's a big question and clarification.
That's why I wanted to pull that, because I think the passes, the one I have in my window that we all get as commissioners is the same pass that's issued to everybody. And so how do you differentiate between an employee pass, a resident pass downtown core? I think that is something that you could move forward.
Yeah, and I have a, I have a question on that, but Michael, you had your light on, go ahead.
Thanks. You know, I'm the newbie here and I'm really struggling to figure out what this is all about, quite honestly, I'm not quite sure, but if I were to say to you, "Show me one of these plots here, the downtown core site plans," if I was to ask you to show me one that would tell me where the employees are parking, what one would that be?
Well, it's an interesting question. We do have license plates, so we could, you know, know which employees were parking where, but we assume that people that were parking over five hours were likely employees. So, based upon the number of cars that stayed over five hours, we assumed that those were employees.
Yeah, but we have-
This, right on right here, this is-
Correct.
So.
We have 20, we're between the two, a little over 50.
Yeah, and then also on Cabrillo as well, Cabrillo Street.
Are you telling me then that the employees are parking very close to the core in lots that are good all day long?
Correct.
And that they're not going out from the core, and they're not opening up parking for the normal customers?
Correct.
And it could be our own worst enemy?
Yes.
And I think that's, I think that's, that's the crux of this study, that's why, that's why the council commissioned the study.
No, I certainly understand that, but I'm just, you know, for me, graphically, it would be maybe a synthesis of these maps that would be a stronger thing that would go, "Wow, that's where they're all parking." And until you tell me that's exactly it, I had a hard time finding it. You know, I'm used to looking at this stuff, but I think, you know, answering the city councils' major question is, "Where do all the employees park?" Boom, this ought to have a site plan of downtown, and it ought to really show where that is.
Yeah, it is. Several years ago, Dave Lund did a survey of downtown and the employees parking. Do you remember what criteria he used?
He just went and talked to each shop owner and asked them how many employees he had, or they had. So he just went down the street and counted them. So we didn't know where they were parking, what he did was he got an, he got a count of the total number of employees in the downtown.
He did. And did he ask at that time if they parked in the downtown, or just-
No, it was just a straight number.
Straight number, okay.
And I would imagine that this question is difficult, that really almost means surveying all the stores along the core and actually going to the owners and saying, "Tell me where all your people park," and be honest about it. So really have a database that's reflective of some meaningful information. It won't come easy, you know, I don't think.
No, it won't come easy.
Maybe there's, maybe there's, there's employees that really feel like they had to park a thousand yards away, and we're not seeing that, but I really think that we have to capture this a little bit.
Well, just to give you a little bit more history again, 'cause you haven't been here since the beginning of the Walker parking surveys. Originally, there were quite a few, and this goes back to Dave Lund days, there was quite a few of employees and shop owners were parking on Del Mar.
In front of their stores, right?
So this is actually a transition that we, that's why these parking lots are set up over here, is so that the employees had a better place to park that, you know, had less impact on the shoppers. So they've been kind of encouraged to go over here, so that's why I was saying, it was a good news to see that they actually were parking over there rather than on Del Mar. So that's an improvement.
But wasn't that due to having more strict time limits?
And we, that's one of the reasons why we lowered the time limit on Del Mar, 'cause people, it was three hours before, and maybe it wasn't enforced quite as well, but also we had the people that were playing the little, you know, "Okay, after three hours, I'm gonna go move my car down the street."
I think that point, I know, Michael, you're new, but the report kind of stated that, that it's not a high percentage, but we know we have to move them out further, but the report is consistent with the Walker parking studies, which I think that's what staff tried to do when they used the interns here for 2013 and 14, which was a great use of asset, that was fabulous compared to paying Walker, you know, a lot of money. But, the 95, and then there was four, like 2004, 6, 8, 10, I mean, there was four or five parking studies downtown by Walker in a decade, and what they've tried to do is they've tried to have it on apples and help use the Walker format throughout, so we have a good apples-to-apples type of a comparison over the last 15 years, which is, I think is really a great job, I think, overall in this. I mean, Walker started using looking at five hours, and so they've tried to continue that, just so we have a continuity with all these other parking studies that we've had. And Cliff sent me the Walker studies, a four meg, you know, a huge file out two or three years ago, and so they're available if you want to look at them, he'll send them to you and choke your computer up if you'd like. But, I mean, what I'm saying is that the report here is very well done, it's consistent with the preceding four or five parking studies we've done in the last 10 years in the downtown core area, and it's, and I think it's, we look at the data and it shows what we have to do.
Don, now you're missing my point. My point is, I think the main thrust of all of this is, where do the employees park in the downtown core? That's what the city council's asking, that's what my head's asking, and I believe that this report could be tuned up to show that much better. And I think it has to do more than just, "Well, they're parking where you can park all day long," and that's the end of that discussion. And if that in fact is the truth, then the question is, is that what we want, because now they're taking that away from customers? Those are, those are close-core parking spots. And so, you know, I think the real issue here is getting to the heart of, do we have a problem? And is it the employees? And if we could get them to migrate somewhere away and open up those lots for Joe San Clemente to come and park, does life become happy? And meters aren't gonna make people happy. Having strict enforcement where you give lots of people tickets is not gonna make people happy. What the merchants want downtown, and what the customers want downtown, is a way to park and enjoy life, and get around, and have a reasonable amount of walking, but, and that means probably quite a bit in my, in my estimation, but I think it really needs to have everybody on the same page to understand exactly what is, what is the current situation? You know, what are the hard facts? And if the employees are really sucking up this close-in parking, then let's, then let's do a parking management strategy that moves them out of it. That's all I'm saying. If you're gonna do strategies, you have to know what your strategy is.
Well, I think that, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm about to get into those strategies.
So I think that's a good segue, so.
So I'll get into these recommendations, and these are coming straight from your report. And I provided graphics when I thought it was helpful to see in relationship to the recommendation. So the first one was to enforce the time limits off the north side of Granada and Lot 6A to make sure there is enough parking for customers. So we noticed that there, you know, that's, that's, free up a little bit of parking, we're not talking a whole lot, but it's, it's something that we'll pass along to our Sheriff's Department. Also, enforcing the no parking between 2:00 AM and 5:00 AM in the all-day public parking lots off Cabrillo, Lot 8A and 7A, we noticed that there's high occupancy in those lots. We had our interns go out early in the morning to see if those lots were heavily utilized first thing in the morning, at 7:00 AM, and a number of them were. And so, you know, some people probably are allowed to park there because they might have a resident parking permit, but others may not, and so passing along that information to make sure that our Sheriff's Department is enforcing would be useful.
I think that what we noticed is that in these surveys over several days, there were some cars that weren't moving at all. So it's not like five hours, it's like, you know, it's, they're just permanently parked in that parking space.
Well, it might be, it might be home for a weekend and they park there Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
So that's the, I don't know how you deal with that, when you, you do need to have a certain amount of parking for the residents in the area, 'cause they have to park somewhere, and so you don't want to eliminate it altogether, but that's, that's a problem to try and grapple with, is how do we deal with someone that just has an extra car that they don't normally drive, but they park it in the space legally, and therefore that space is just taken away from the pool by that one person.
Or, or is that person somebody who is doing what we think is the goal of mixed use? They've parked and they're spending, you know, the entire weekend, as you say, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, downtown, because all of the amenities that they need are there. You know, I think it's a, it's one of the things that Cliff and I talked about today, it's tricky when you look at the objective, you know, what is it that we want the residents to do and what are we trying to encourage them to do? You know, that is a tricky issue.
Another recommendation is to encourage downtown restaurant employees to park at the Public Fire Station Senior Center lot, that's Lot 4C. On the weekends and weekdays after 5:00 PM, we noticed that, that, back in 2013, that lot is underutilized after 5:00 PM, and then on the weekends.
Jim?
I seem to remember a conversation, I'm trying to picture that from various businesses, right, in my head, I'm having trouble doing it, but what is that, especially in the evening, what is that walk like? I'm looking at not just, you know, is it within 900 feet or something like that, but, you know, I'm thinking of-
Is it well-lit?
Is it well-lit? Is it a comfortable walk? Is it crossing busy streets? All that sort of a thing, and if that's something that has to happen every day, back and forth, and you're a long way from work, you know, and you're a waitress getting off work at 11 o'clock or midnight or something like that, that could be an issue, so.
Yeah, definitely. Safety is always a concern in where people would want, would choose to park or want to park.
It kind of, maybe calls, you know, to be, you know, creative with our toolbox, so to speak. You know, is there, I remember when I was in college, there was a service you could call, a campus service, for, you know, people who were out late at night at a party, you could call them and you can get a little escort home, it was like a volunteer service or something. So things like that may be, you know, one way to approach this if we're saying, "Employees really need to park away from the core, but we're gonna support that, we're not just gonna, you know, strand you out there, we're gonna have some way of supporting that."
Yeah. And I've heard what some resort towns will do is that when the business closes, say it's a restaurant, is that they'll actually have a van or a, someone has a car, and they'll actually shuttle their employees to these off-site lots. That's always, that's an option as well. It may work for some folks, it may not work for others. But it is, you know, a small opportunity that we saw. Another is to, and this was, came as a result of talking with the commissioners earlier during a study session, is to increase circulation of the public parking brochure. The city makes this public parking brochure that shows the location of the all-day lots and the three-hour lots, and to make sure that that's provided to all the merchants in the downtown and they're distributing that. Put in the DBA office, encourage the DBA to put it on their Facebook page and on their DBA website as well.
Don?
Yeah, a question, do we have a Quilumont branch we could develop for our own city website, you know, like a, "Here's parking in the city," you know, a, to, we make this, this downtown a regional draw four or five times a year, you know?
Well, they used to put it, parking on the city website, I would encourage them to do that again, but they, they used to do that on the, on the homepage, they used to do that.
The new site, we ought to have a branch to, you know, city parking or something like that on the new, I don't see it on the new website, but, 'cause here we are, last Saturday, we had put on the glitz and we had 10,000 people walking down Del Mar.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good catch, Don.
For, you know, the people of Mission Viejo or whatever, however we want to advertise it, so they know where to go.
You know, another possibility for this item too, these are all good, you know, things, you know, handouts and Facebook's pages, but there are, you know, a lot of mobility apps now, you know, you know, Google Maps or Google, the Google Navigation, just, you know, off the top of my head, that may show what the parking lots are. I haven't looked, I haven't done research, but there's apps for darn near everything now. So I wouldn't be surprised if there was, there were ways for us to sort of add our parking lots to the inventory that's displayed in one or more of these types of popular applications. So someone hits a button, or someone, at this point, it's great speech recognition, just says, "Where's nearby parking?", and something will pop up. So it's something probably for the IT people to take a look at, it probably wouldn't be hard to do just an initial, you know, mobile application search, it'd probably take 10 minutes, you know, just to get an initial survey of possible places where with a little bit of effort, we could add our inventory of lots to that more dynamic way of leading people to those lots.
They actually have a recommendation to that effect way down in the back page or-
Yeah, I think the future ones.
Smart parking spaces and all that, which I think would be really-
That's, it's a little, it's a little different, but it is another, kind of-
It's an outgrowth, take that smart knowledge and-
Well, maybe that's something that when we get, when we get to evaluating the recommendations, we can look at, you know, adding that to that particular one.
Yeah, I'm taking notes that those are both great recommendations. Let me just make sure I hit the short-term, yes, I did. Okay, so with regards to long-term recommendations, and we're talking about, again, this is just managing existing parking supplies, so long-term recommendations may be just kind of short-term, next few years, one, two, three, four, five years. There are probably other solutions that are much longer term. So one recommendation would be to convert the all-day public parking lots off Cabrillo, 8A and 7A, on the south side of Avenida Cabrillo, to three-hour time limits to free up parking supply for customers and shoppers in the downtown core. This recommendation is contingent on finding alternative all-day parking further out from the downtown core. It's also, would be contingent on seeing how that would impact the residential uses in the area as well. There's, I think I calculated about, between that south side of Cabrillo, that Lot 7A and 8A, there's about 70 spaces, but yet, a number of residences in the area are utilizing those spaces as well. So, to pursue this recommendation, our staff would have to look in to see how that impacts the residents in the area as well.
Well, they just still have the pass which will allow them to park there, is that correct?
That, that's my assumption. I, unfortunately, I don't have all the details of this residential parking pass, so it's something staff's gonna have to explore further.
It's just a city parking pass, not specifically residential parking pass, because you can use the pass to park anywhere in the city.
Although my assumption is that there must be something that designates it as a resident pass, because the cars are not being ticketed when they're parked in the lots where parking is prohibited overnight. the lots where parking is prohibited overnight. So there must be something.
Yeah, between 2:00 a.m. and 5:00 a.m.
I'll, I have a parking pass, and I'll get a ticket if I'm over the time limit. At least my wife has, we'll tell her to know that. So, so there must be something that designates it as a residence. But let's, we'll need to research it and find out why or how that works. And it would be good to know how many too, to kind of get a gauge.
Yeah.
How many resident, yeah, that's the big number. I mean, is it a substantial number or is it relatively small?
Well, you know, you look at, like, like I just mentioned before, the Hotel San Clemente, it's, it's, it's an apartment building, really. And so how many rooms does it have? 50? It's got a parking lot behind it that carries, I was down there walking around this afternoon, and it's about 25 parking spots.
I think there are approximately 70 residents in the 100 block.
Okay. That's a pretty big number.
Well, I think quite frankly, though, a lot of people that live in Hotel San Clemente don't utilize a car. Some do, but I don't, I think there's a certain majority that don't utilize a car.
We, we just don't know. You know, we have a normal planning factor of an apartment building, like I say.
Yeah, I, I think this parking pass is curious because that's the perk I've realized we got. We all get them, you know? And I, I have it on one of my cars. And I haven't quite figured out what it does, but if I, if I go to the Fisherman's and park in that big lot, I don't have to pay. At least, that's what I'm thinking. I've never gotten a ticket. I honestly don't know what the breadth of this permit allows. Can I go to a three-hour lot and stay there all day? I don't know. We should definitely know that. We should know how many, how many of those passes are out there because one of the biggest problems might be that employees buy these passes and they're expensive, 50 or 100 bucks? And they may be using those to take prime parking spaces just because they're, they're able to buy that pass. So that might be, that might be a, a way to, to manage this a little bit better, to make sure we're not giving away permits that actually shoot us in the foot.
And it's my understanding, these parking passes that we all buy as residents are just for the meter, time, the places you have to pay. These all-day lots where people are able to park overnight is a separate pass. It's different. That's my understanding. So, but I have to verify that, and I have to verify the number.
And I don't know, the all-night, the all-day lots, you might be able to just have a residence pass.
It's just a residence pass.
But for, I know parking on Del Mar for two hours, that's not going to help you. Thank you for the experience.
So she knows, so Heather's got the ticket.
That's good news. But if they have Peter on Del Mar, then they can park there.
But so, I mean, clearly we need more information. So clearly, we, we, we do need more information about both the residence permit and the employee permits and, you know, what those, what they're entitled to with those and, and how enforcement, you know, approaches those.
Mike, just, if I could just add something here. The pass which you have, you can park in the Pier Bowl all day without getting ticketed. If you park on Del Mar, there's a time limit.
Yes.
And you will get ticketed on Del Mar, yes. But it's, 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 it's the same pass that we all have.
But we believe that's different than, than the pass that the residents have, but we're going to get more information on that.
Ticket Sherman, yeah. So staff will have to get that.
Well, it should be. I mean, we should have different types of passes for different functions and so.
If our... No, the residents of the downtown. So, so that, we're assuming that that is how the, the police department, the Sheriff's Department knows not to ticket them between the hours of 2:00 and 5:00. Yeah. That's, that's what we're saying. We're not clear on that, and staff's going to be doing some research on that so that we can evaluate that more carefully.
So the next long-term recommendation. Now, this is one that wasn't in your report, but will be included in the report that goes to, to council. It's to convert the all-day lot off of Avenida Granada, Lot 6C, to three-hour time limit. There's seven parking spaces. It's, it's basically a lot that's part of its private, part of its city-owned, public-owned, and it's all-day and it's heavily utilized and...
It's a good move.
Turning it to three-hour time limit would encourage turnover of those spaces. The next recommendation would be to investigate leasing the private Presbyterian Church, Church Lot 2E. You might recall when we were looking back at that 2013, yes, that area there, that 2013 study, that was one of those areas that was under 40% utilized. There's a lot of capacity there during peak demand in the downtown. So that's an opportunity site.
Jim?
For employee parking.
I'm sorry. I know when we've looked at that, at one or two of the applications for that required parking on Del Mar, and some of those had agreements, there, there was just a little concern that I think some of the commissioners had because the lot, you do have to walk across the street, and you're still off of Del Mar, and then you have another walk to Del Mar. But most importantly, there's, there's no crosswalk there. You have to go down to one of the, you know, it's like a walk up to one of the corners to get a proper crosswalk. And of course, most people aren't going to do that. They're going to go right across the street. And there can be some traffic on that street coming up Australia. So it's, it's, you know, if they've got excess capacity in the downtown core, especially probably maybe for employee parking, that might be something. That's a good thing. But I think we're, it's one of the, I think maybe it's a theme that I'm seeing keep coming up, that if we, as we move this parking around or push people out to the side, we have to give them good ways to get to where they need to go and not, you know, cross a dangerous, you know, possibly dangerous street without walking a block up to, you know, go to the light, which they probably won't do. So we have to keep that in mind, that there's more that we have to do than just define other parking areas. We've got to make sure that there's a way for them to get here from, from there to the work to back again, you know, in some kind of safety.
Yeah.
I think that's kind of also related to the lighting that you all brought up about the, the Senior Center Lot. So that would be a key, is to kind of connect, maybe we can add to this one right now. Cliff, is that we also look at path of travel and, you know...
Correct.
Lighting and other issues to make it desirable for employees to want to use.
I would actually point out, though, that there is a lit button push thing for, off of Cabrillo to go across El Camino Real there, right by the Surfing Donuts, the Grill, that right across, just west of the new Sleep and Sleep, that you push the button and the whole street lights up for you there.
Across the street.
Right.
The traffic engineer would be the people to say, but, you know, maybe we just need a continental crosswalk in the middle. I, I don't know if, if we need something more than that, but something needs to be considered.
But you're right, it is an issue that keeps coming up.
Path of travel's got to be worked out.
The other thing is, if we're going to migrate them away, not only should it be a safe path to get there, but there ought to be enough there there, you know?
There's to be enough capacity.
Might be a question of church law, we might need a, a series of places so that that migration is comfortable and it's safe. And that would make the floor. And they, and you could actually give them a special pass on a windshield or something that kind of fit that program that, that they, that they could be there in longer, longer periods of time.
Do, do we know, the Presbyterian Church, they, they seem to have an awful lot of excess parking. Are they overparked?
Not on Sundays.
So, so they have what they need, but for a sign?
Well, they, they actually have reciprocal parking agreements on Sundays for their, like, Pizza Port, that, which has that back parking lot on the roof. And so Pizza Port has, I think, an exit, you know, there's a reciprocal agreement for the, for Sunnys.
So people can park in Sunnys and Pizza Port if they're going to church?
And vice versa. If you're going to go to Sunnys, like I mentioned, one way I've gone, he has an agreement with the Presbyterian Church to park in their lot.
Okay.
But there are sometimes, and since I, for disclosure, I attend the Presbyterian Church, there, there are times during Tuesdays and Wednesdays where those lots are quite full with church activities. So it's a very vibrant, large church with a lot of parking for a good reason. They, they, over the years, they've developed a huge plant there. And so it's, there are times when it's, it's full. Pick a Wednesday night, and there's a lot going on at that church.
I can't believe anybody would be doing anything except watching the planning commission on a Wednesday night.
I think you're already a fever.
There's only seven people I can think of who would be doing that, and they're all, well, six now, they're all here.
So, moving on to the next recommendation. Investigate leasing the excess capacity at the Quixote Lot. That's Lot 9A, to increase the public parking supply. We've purely talked with the owners, and they haven't been interested, but doesn't mean that in the future, this is again, a long-term recommendation, may be an opportunity.
I kind of did, you know, a downtown parking walk today, an informal survey, including the Quixote Lot, because I, we surveyed that building, went to that building eight or nine months ago to approve a business in there, which the, the middle of the day, the upper, they have two levels in their indoor parking, and the upper level was virtually empty and the down, and same with the down. But today, the upstairs lot was full at about 2:00 in the afternoon. And the downstairs was about a third full. And then the empty lot, which is out in the, was about half-full.
Yeah.
But it only has about eight spots, I think. And it was full. So I, I didn't get out of my car and actually go walk the courtyard of the Quixote Building, but I think there might have been, the occupancy rate...
Low.
Used to be low.
Still is.
But there were a lot of people parking in their, in their parking lot, in the Quixote Lot. But I think merits, talk to them, because I think it's a very viable solution. But they, maybe they don't know who's parking there.
Did, did we give any consideration to, you know, changing some of our planning conditions, where currently we say you have to, you know, park a certain number of, you know, if it's this type of business, you have to have these many parking spots? To, to talking about how a business might have to say, well, you can do fewer lots, but you also have to contribute to some employee parking system? Both, you know, a lot where employees can go to and the way to get there and come back? So in other words, it's...
Some sort of in-lufy.
Yeah, and in-lufy. So, so that they, to start to actually build up a, a way to support some employee parking for the downtown area. Was that, was that considered at all?
Well, there's one recommendation that comes from a previous Walker study related to providing employee parking within 900 feet of a site and being able to provide required onsite parking actually. There, you know, the number of spaces that are required for onsite, a certain portion be provided offsite, 900 feet away for just an employee portion. That was a recommendation from previous Walker study, and it's one that we decided to include in here as well. And I was going to get to that point shortly, but that was the only one that's been studied previously, recommendation.
Let's move on.
So the next long-term recommendation is to evaluate the cost of adding parking spaces to the city-owned public lot. And that's, you can see there at the top of Avenida Cabrillo on the north side, Lot 8A. So there's a bit of downslope to the property, and there may be an opportunity to, to capture a few more parking spaces. We'd have to figure out what the cost would be to add soil, to, you know, make that lot a little bit larger, and see if it were worth it to, to do that. But it is, is a recommendation for us to look into. The next recommendation would be to investigate whether annual parking passes should be considered that allow for employees to park all day within lots 8A and 7A for a premium price. Parking without the pass could be three-hour, and the revenue received could be used to pay for the downtown parking management.
Yeah, but you're putting the fox in the hen's.
Well, well, this is kind of along those lines. This is kind of what I was, you know, alluding to, that maybe not lots 8A and 7A, because those are still in the core, and maybe not making it optional, but required. So, you know, there's a lot over here to the side, and now you have to purchase employee parking spots or support this many real parking spots in your area. So it lets them sort of, instead of having 20 spots, they only need to get 15 spots, but they also have to contribute to, which would be, 15 spots is easier than 20 spots.
Are you talking to businesses versus the employee?
Yeah, the businesses would pay, would pay it, right? As an in-lufy. So you don't have to get those extra five spots for your employees, but instead you are contributing to this greater downtown employee parking solution.
And it'd be a condition of approval as part of their CUP.
Right. Because I'm thinking, I'm thinking even with 900 feet away, because, because I think it's along the lines of what you're talking there, except it, it, this, if it's this way, we can kind of say the parking is wherever we want, so it could be off at the edge instead of a core thing. But I would imagine a lot of people, a lot of business owners struggle to get the right number of parking spots. They get, have to sign agreements with other business owners, et cetera. And if we ease that burden, but said, you know, you're contributing this in-lufy, you know, for really the, the burden of doing those parking lots, parking spaces that your employees would use, those are now going to be, you know, you're paying the city really to maintain a parking system for the employees. Am I making sense when I'm...
I understand, you're making sense on an in-lufy basis. This particular recommendation is like, okay, let employees park all day in 8A and 7A, which they're recommending, you know, make three-hour, but at a premium. I think that's kind of a slippery slope. It's kind of, you know, okay, we're trying to move everybody out, but, oh, by the way, here's a, what's the premium we pay? I, you know, I, this is the one, when I read this particular recommendation, I just had a little, I was uncomfortable with. You know, I think the concept of taking, you know, 8A and 7A and making them three-hour parking and moving the all-day parking out, we, that's great. I think we subscribe to that. I do, I support it. That's what you recommend, recommend. This is kind of like Michaelson's counterintuity on that one, this one little option. I just don't know where the data supports that. You know, and how do you, how do you make all that happen when we've still got residents to accommodate down there?
I don't think I'm going to try and defend it. If you don't think it's a good idea, then I think that the commissioner, if you collectively think it's a bad idea, let's recommend it be remit.
And...
It's, it's not an issue of raising money for the city. It's an issue of raising parking spaces. And so it's going to, it's going to be directly opposite. Please, they be close and take the spots where you want. That's, that's a loser.
Well, we can strike that one more than happy to.
May I suggest...
Unless you move them way out, you know, get them out of the corner.
May I suggest we're, we're having a very rich question and answer period right now, which is, I think, very helpful to us and to staff. But we haven't gotten into discussion yet, so perhaps if we could finish up the...
Wrap it up.
...presentation, we'll take, we'll open the public hearing, and then after we close the public hearing, we'll take a, just a brief break, give us our five minutes, and, and then come back and talk about discussion and whether we feel that, depending on the time, whether it's getting too late for us to be coherent.
Okay.
Okay.
So now we'll get into some general recommendations, and many of these look familiar because they're parking management strategies. Continue enforcement of all the posted parking regulations. No more use of parking waivers unless additional public spaces are obtained. And that's how the policy has been, the city council has directed us to, to pursue that policy. And three, require new development to use off-site employee parking lots to give parking relief near the businesses. That'd be, of course, contingent upon us setting up that off-site employee parking lot. Consistent with Walker's 2003 Downtown Parking Needs Assessment. This is where we talked about, currently all parking has to be provided within 500 feet if it's off-site parking. And many cities have greater walking allowances for employees, and they have that walking radius in 900 feet. So the recommendation would be to have employees, a certain percentage of employee, employees for, of the required parking, to be able to... of employee, employees for, of the required parking, to be able to have that required parking 900 feet from the site. And then, recommendation number five, it would be to, consistent with Walker's past studies, consider reduction of two-hour time limit to 90-minute on Avenue and Del Mar. So, we put that in there just because there may be a point in time where that's something that the, the city may want to consider, may not be appropriate at this time. And encourage the use of shared parking agreements between private businesses for future restaurant development, and we've been seeing that happening.
I have a question on that, I know, because you've been working that leasing type thing for many years, and it's really been very successful, but then again, we, through some of these discussions, we've had some pushback, you know, we've had the Quixote pushback, I guess you've experienced over the years, and then the one behind Sam's shoes, possibly the Thaler. Have we updated our pricing structure for this leasing, I mean, the cost per spot or whatever you pay at all over the years, or is it, is it time to do a market assessment of, of, of that area? Is that the reason why maybe some of these parking lot owners are pushing back?
I haven't seen a increase in revenue, the amount...
The real question is the other way around, is I own a parking lot, and you come to me, and I'll give you $50 a month for a parking spot, and I'm saying, no, give me 100, and you're saying, I'll, I'll talk to you next year.
What we're seeing, Don, is, we're seeing that the, the free market is out competing us now, with, you know, several restaurants coming in and, and getting parking agreements with, you know, neighboring properties, they're paying a lot more than what the city's paying. So, maybe that's a good thing, that maybe the free market's really the better way to solve some of these parking issues.
Like Rocco?
Yeah, but to answer the, the original question, no, we haven't increased our parking rates since I think the, well, depending, it does vary, depending on the term, now if it's just a month-to-month, I don't think we pay as much, if we do all the improvements to the lot, then we require a longer lease and maybe pay a little bit less too, so each one's slightly different in terms of the negotiation, has to do with the circumstances, but generally, we haven't increased our rate over the time.
I was just trying to key on a couple of the comments that you, you've made on these briefings, if there's pushback from the owners, in fact, I happened to be on that lot behind Sam the day before they paved it, the owner, the lady, I think she went to high school with you, or she knows you from high school, so she mentioned, I forget her name, but their, their reticence there is their, their merchants don't want them to go that route. But then again, I was thinking with some of the Quixote pushback, is there, are market forces, is it time to up, for us, the city, to update pricing structure so that here's a parking lot owner and you go in and offer him a five-year lease and you're going to repave it? I mean, there's some real pluses there, and so maybe it's time to reevaluate the, the financial inducements is all I'm trying to throw out there, I don't know if it's, if we're going to, and perceive with this data, I mean, one of your recommendations is move, you know, people out, and of course, I, I would support, you know, Cabrillo 8A, 7A, and, and all that, contingent on, you know, finding this parking further out, and maybe finding that parking further out is, the economics have to be rewarded, I guess is what I'm, to make this all work, to make this, this strategy executable, is it, it's time to sit down with the finance department and take a look at it, based on what you're seeing with market forces.
I think that just happens to be negotiating anyway, right? If we go to the Presbyterian Church, or we go to anybody else, they're going to ask us for what the market, what they feel the, the spaces are worth, so it's part of the negotiation.
Right, right, and Presbyterian Church is a first-class parking lot, so it's, you know, there's no improvements really needed.
So, moving on, there's, I apologize, there's a number of recommendations here. Continue to convert the private lots to public lots with a focus on lots shown by the survey to be underutilized. For new development, ensure the parking is available onsite or can be provided through joint parking agreements or shared parking agreements. Continue to monitor and record parking occupancy along Avenue and Del Mar to see how changes in time limits modify behavior. Wait, no, no, I know you don't like this one, evaluate paid parking if time limits and enforcement are not effective. If implemented, consider use of parking revenue for parking management or to increase capacity in the district. Number five, initiate new general plan implementation measure, which states, prepare comprehensive parking and circulation strategies for key commercial areas, including North Beach, Pirable, Del Mar, T-Zone, and Plaza San Clemente. And lastly, number six, evaluate costs of smart parking spaces, and those are those, Commissioner Rowland brought this up in one of our study sessions as a option, and that is where those, the sensors are installed in parking lots that alert drivers with compatible interfaces when parking spaces are available. Additionally, the sensors can send signals to sheriffs when a car has overstayed its timeline.
Okay, so, we thank you for a very comprehensive report.
Thank you.
And now, we'll open the public hearing, and seeing no one step forward to speak on this item, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll take a brief break, about five minutes, and then we'll come back and discuss our next steps.
Well, really, just pass on this parking management record.
You're my world, you're every move I make. All the eyes see the stars up in the skies, but for me, they shine within your eyes as the trees reach for the sun above. So my arms reach out to you for love. With your hand resting in mine, I feel a power so divine. You're my world, you're my night and day. You're my world, you're every prayer I pray. If my love is there to me, then it's the end of my world for me. With your hand resting in mine, I feel a power so divine. You're my world, you're my night and day. You're my world, you're every prayer I pray. If my love is there to me, then it's the end of my world, end of my world, end of
Yeah. I was just liking it.
If you wanted to try and tackle it, I'd suggest it'd be easier to do it from a staff report, and going through the short-term recommendations kind of one at a time, and giving a thumbs up or a thumbs down, or whatever your, your pleasure is, but that's my suggestion.
Yeah, I had a, yes, I, well, I, I made a, I made a bang, that's as far as I got, so we're reconvening. Question for the commission, as we've discussed in the past, if we go too late, we feel that we don't necessarily look at all angles of, of a problem as thoroughly as we would like to, to do our duty for the public, so I think this has a potential, or my opinion is, this has a potential of going later, we've already had a great deal of discussion, and we haven't even been officially in discussion, so if we think that this is going to require discussion, we might want to choose a few items that we feel that we need some more information from staff on, such as the resident passes, and ask them to follow up on that, and then have an abbreviated staff report at a future meeting, and then get into our discussion at an earlier hour, so that we can look at both the intended and unintended consequences of these various recommendations. That's my thought, but I might be in the minority, what's the pleasure of the commission?
I think we've had a great deal of discussion, but I like your idea, I mean, we needed clarification with regard to the various passes, I think we really need to take my suggestion about the employee parking where they're actually parking, and so forth, but I, but I think we've had a lot of discussion, and it's all in the, in the record here, I don't know if we need to go through each, each item to go, you know, to make a recommendation at this point. I mean, this is a very comprehensive report, Cliff, you've done a terrific job, and want to thank you for that, you know, I think we've all had our, our likes and our dislikes about various things here that are already there, this isn't, this is a recommendation to city council, they're going to listen, they're going to read our, the minutes, they're going to take a look at this and make their own decision.
Yes, Mike.
I, you know, go back to the first page of this thing, that city council directed staff to perform a license plate survey to determine how employee parking and other long-term parking impacts the downtown core parking supply. To me, that's the mission statement, and this work that's been done, and I think it's good work, I think goes way beyond that, and which isn't necessarily bad, but in terms of being focused, I think it, it waters down what I would see to be the more direct resolution and product to give to the city council, which is, hey, where are they parked? How much of it is, and, you know, what are we losing, and, you know, let's, let's, because here, we've got all these solutions and all this stuff, and I think that's great, I do, I mean, we're, we're trying to solve a bigger problem, but I keep looking at this, and, and I'm, I'm going that that key mission statement in my mind could be stronger in this report, and, and that's what I kept trying to say to you folks, that, you know, did I jump right out at you, oh man, they're parking over here, and, you know, that's, and they're taking X amount of spaces, and that's why we've got such and such a problem, and we have a shortage of this many spaces, and so on and so forth, I mean, very pragmatic. If we want to go further and then try to solve that problem, I think that's a different kettle of fish, but let me just say that if, if I was to suggest where we would go from this point, it wouldn't be problem-seeking, it would be coming up with the perfect world. Even talking about all of this stuff, and if, if we would change our perspective and say, you know, what would be the perfect world for San Clemente parking? Would it be one-hour parking at Del Mar? Would it be 20 minutes? You know, would, would employee parking be 100 meters away or 1,000 meters away? I mean, that, that starts to give you something that you can get your arms around, and it's, it's a heck of a lot better than throwing 100 darts at 100 targets. And I think that if we wanted to be really productive and work with city, I think we ought to come up with the perfect world scenario. Trying to figure where we're going.
Okay, so I take that to mean that you think we have a, a much longer discussion ahead of us, and so probably it's not practical to do that tonight. Don, what's your feeling?
I think the, the cost of perfect information is infinite, the cost of getting to the perfect world that you subtract from Michael is, you know, a bridge too far, and we, some of us have gone through this trail, I know you relate to this effort, and I think we've come up with some very short-term, long-term, and other general recommendations that I think the city council can work with. Yeah, we don't have all the finite granularity of where all the employees are parking, but we have a pretty good idea, and this is consistent, I can say, with the other 10 years of Walker reports that previous councils have paid for, and so I, like, a short-term recommendation, by exception, just make sure we cover the residents down there with this two to five AM, PM, just make sure we have a good manual on the resident, maybe we need to look more into the, how the different types of parking passes, but most of these short-term recommendations, I could prescribe, I think this, we should move out on that, on the short-term recommendations other than make sure...
You feel we could reach that discussion...
I think so.
Okay.
And in the long-term discussion, the only thing I have a problem with is this premium parking thing, with the, with the 8A and 7A, which is counterintuity when we're trying to move the employees out, and so, the short, the long-term recommendations, I would feel comfortable with going to council with that, with those recommendations. And in the general areas, the only area I would discuss is, okay, make sure the finances of the, of the market forces on your private, public, private negotiations, that's what makes, is going to make this thing work, is one thing, and then the final two bullets on the general recommendation, which is the general plan, the, the comprehensive parking thing, I think is, you know, like priority 1B, and then the final thing, evaluate cost of smart pack, which Jim brought up earlier, and I think is priority 1A, but I think it's got to be bigger than that, and we should be moving out faster, because technology exploding, you do have parking apps out there, and we could get people smart with sensors in these parking lots, and we could get applications like Waze and some other things to tell you where to park, and same, so I think the smart stuff really helps us make more efficient use, but the study tells us we're out of parking, it's full. I think Jim summarized it, the public parking is full, when I walk around there today, it's full, the private stuff has some slack to it, and that's, that summarizes for me the entire effort, which I think is great, to go forward to council with some of the recommendations with, other than some of those other issues that I just mentioned, and I'd just throw that out for discussion with the rest of the commissioners.
Okay, Jim?
I kind of agree with Michael in terms of the fact that we, this is a, this is an impressive tone that we've got here, but given what we say the goal is and what the city council has directed us to do, this, it seems narrower, it's about employee parking and other long-term parking and how to deal with that. Now, there's this overall goal here about balancing these parking demand by making the current parking system more efficient and accommodating, so that's, that's kind of a bigger thing than just the employee and long-term parking, I mean, the employee and long-term parking is part of that, so I'm a little bit at a loss of where, you know, where we want to go in terms of what our recommendations are. Based on this, I would say we should be making a, a set of recommendations that focus on how to deal with the long-term parking issues, probably, you know, mostly employee parking. However, there's a lot of good information and recommendations here that we could make, there's a lot we could do in terms of... There's a lot we could do in terms of reducing the friction of parking right now out there, which I think was going to involve a lot of discussion on our part. I think there's areas we haven't talked about at all, like bicycle and even improving pedestrian access, and that's something we have to talk about from a multi-modal perspective. There's the issue of the fact that this is based on an assessment of peak times and the general plan directs us to make decisions based on off-peak times in order to keep the village character. So that's something that at least deserves some discussion. So based on all that, I think we need maybe a little bit more clarification here on what our ultimate goal is. I think we, we've talked about some information we'd like back from staff and we, you know, we've had a lot of discussion already that probably, you know, staff can chew on a little bit. And I think what we do need to cover, you know, while I think everything you said is true and that there's these priorities, I do think that there's enough there that, you know, we have at least an hour's discussion in front of us, probably more than that. So I'm inclined to say perhaps, you know, let staff go and, you know, revise a little bit, let us consider it, and then, you know, have a solid discussion, you know, next time. We probably don't need a staff presentation except for perhaps some of the changes that they make. You know, the new information, right? So that's kind of my feeling right now.
And Bart?
Well, I think they did a great job on this thing. The information I've gathered and what I can do, I can understand the short-term goals and the short-term recommendations. I don't think it's, I think the long-term are incomplete and can't really be substantiated by the report because I don't know how we can figure out our parking needs if we don't know how much commercial space we have down there, what is a potential occupancy, can we approve another restaurant with a patio seating in it? I think all of that needs to be discussed for the long-term issues, but I'm comfortable with the short-term recommendations right now. And I think that would be appropriate for action that we could send to the council. But I think the long-term needs some more study because, you know, I think we've got to know what we can do as planning commissioners when we get asked for approvals of new spaces and all, can we say, oh, sure, because we're going to be redoing our zoning ordinance? And are we going to say, well, we can give only 10 seats outside in the patio because that's all the parking we've got? Something of that sort. So I'm uncomfortable with the long-term recommendations.
Yeah, I, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. You know, I have similar feelings. I think with some minor edits, I'd feel comfortable with the short-term recommendations. And Don, as you say, I'm having one B be, we need to have this, you know, comprehensive, well, this implementation measure to have this comprehensive strategic look. I agree that staff has come up with, you know, some good ideas and put some good ideas in front of us, but I think we need to look at them in the context of these larger issues and that needs to be done as part of that strategic approach to the downtown. So would the commission be comfortable making the short-term recommendations to, in the immediate future, after some discussion, in making an immediate impact on the employee parking in the short term and then having the next step be to investigate longer-term recommendations as part of the implementation measure? Would that be something that we want to look?
You know, I think when we make recommendations to City Council, I think we can't do it on a piecemeal basis. I don't think we can just send to them a short-term recommendations. Now, I think we need to, I agree with everything that all four of you said, and, but I think we need to do it all at once instead of just, you know, piecemeal.
Then if we're going to make long-term recommendations, I think these are issues that are, I think, pretty deep issues that require extensive discussion.
Right. No, I know that.
You know, if we want to give all the recommendations, if the rest of the commission feels that way, I think, so we either adjourn to have further discussion on all the recommendations or we make the short-term recommendations and suggest that the longer-term issues be considered as part of the broader strategy that the general plan calls for. And we, and our recommendation be to council that that strategy be, or that implementation measure be undertaken as soon as possible. Jim, you had a thought?
Just from what I hear you saying, and, and Michael, I think actually I like your point, that the focus is on the employee parking. And so I think that in our kind of revised version of this report, I see kind of two parts, which is this focus on what we do with the employee parking, and we can do that on the short term and the long term. And I think it's easier for all of us to wrap our mind around that segment of it. And then go ahead and keep all these other recommendations, which is kind of, you know, part of the history of the Walker parking study that was, you know, has been brought forward. And connect that with number five, which you guys were saying, which is the implementation measure. Because in the implementation, that's a, that's a full, you know, analytical effort at looking at the downtown parking problem and also these other areas as well, which at that point we...
That's where you look at the...
We're probably not doing that with interns. Okay, we're probably using some experts of that. And so taking those other recommendations that are kind of more far-reaching and need a lot more analysis and putting that in the recommendation for that aspect of it. Does that make sense? So we could come back with you at the next meeting with kind of a more refined effort at dealing with what Michael was getting at in terms of the employee parking, both short term and long term. And that would be something we would want to forward to City Council now. And then also kind of, oh, by the way, we really want to focus on this implementation measure in the coming years as soon as we have staff time and availability to deal with these other kinds of recommendations.
Are you able to do the employee segment of it within two weeks?
We'll try.
No, that's, that's really the core of the goal.
Well, we were talking about just figuring out how many, the information about the parkings, the parking passes, right? And how many we issue. I wasn't going to actually do a survey like Dave Lund did of all the employees in downtown. If I need to do that, yeah, I agree, then if you guys want that, then that's going to take us longer. Maybe I should ask Cliff. It's easy for me to say.
So you're suggesting we do that on the 17th? Because that seems...
You know, we can try to do it on the 17th, so, you know.
Because I'm going to have an abbreviated report, but more of a focus on the recommendations and breaking it into those two components.
I'm just concerned about, because we have the zoning amendment.
Yeah, Chris Wright.
Oh, that's right, the zoning amendment on the 17th.
Okay, you know what, just to give us all more time and effort, let's wait till January to get this done.
I think that would be better, because I think it'd be important to have Wayne's perspective.
And I don't think we have anything at the first meeting in January anyway at this point.
Okay, then that would be an ideal time. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay, should we, City Attorney, should we vote on that? Or do you want, or are we basically...
It's not a public hearing item, but, so, we could just have a motion to table the item really, and you're okay as well.
Okay, all right. Should we, can we have a motion?
Then I will move that we, you want to table it or continue it to that specific date, certain?
It doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
Jane said it's not a public hearing.
All right, then I move that we table the item. The future date.
Paul Shaver?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Michael, did you want to say something?
I was not going to say aye. I wasn't, I was not going to say aye to that. I don't mind tabling it from our perspective, I don't want to table it from their perspective. I think what Jim said is really where I was going with what I was trying to say, which is, we need to do a little bit more work on this employee issue. It needs to get focused, it needs to be clean, it needs to be very understandable. Now, that doesn't mean that they can't work on that. So I'm a little bit worried about tabling it and they don't do anything, so.
I think, I think, no.
As long as you guys got a plan to...
I think the point is, we're going to table it to give them the opportunity to refine the report, to come back to us, and then we'll have discussion.
We're going to be coming back on January, whatever the first meeting is, six or seven.
Okay, so your vote was aye?
Yes.
Okay. So that, and opposed? Okay, so that passes six zero. Okay, and that brings us to reports. Commissioners, do you have anything from Coastal?
I know the agenda should be out today. I just haven't, it might be electronically, but I haven't, for Coastal, I haven't been able to read it. But it should be continued efforts on our street sweeping issues that we were, we talked about last month, which we continue to this coming, coming week. So we're discussing that.
Okay, thank you. And then, Michael, did you have a report? And then Councilwoman Dunczek, I think as many of you know, is entertaining or has brought forth the idea of a mobility task force and council will be discussing that at their next meeting. She's asked that if any of you have ideas for some of the issues that the task force might address, things that should be priorities for them, that you email them to me and I will forward them on to her. And that's before their next meeting on the 16th. Okay? All right, we have a motion?
I will move we adjourn to the study session to be held at 6:00 P.M. on December 17, 2014 in Council Chambers of City Hall located at 100 Avenue of Priscito, San Clemente, California.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are a jerk.